Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order with the clerk call the roll to establish a quorum.
You, Councilmember Kaplan. Mayor Protem Talamantes. Councilmember Valenzuela. Vice Mayor Maples. Councilmember Gata.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Vang.
I'm here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
I am here. Councilmember Jennings, would you give us the honor of leading us in the land acknowledgement and the pledge of allegiance, please?
My pleasure, Mayor. Please rise for the opening acknowledgements in honor of Sacramento's indigenous people and tribal lands. To the original people of this land, the Nesean people, the Southern Maidu, Valley and Plains Miwok, Patnam-Witnam, and the peoples of the Wilton Rancheria, Sacramento's only federally recognized tribe, may we acknowledge and honor the native people who came before us and still walk beside us on these ancestral lands by choosing to gather together in the act of practice of acknowledgement, appreciation for Sacramento's indigenous people's history, their contributions, and their lives. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, a very good afternoon to everyone here. We begin with the consent calendar. Are there any changes or questions or comments that members would like to make on the consent calendar?
I have time on item two.
On item two, Councilmember Kaplan. Okay. Do we have public testimony on the consent calendar?
I have one speaker, Mr. Mayor, Lambert, on consent item one. Go ahead and get started, and then I can do that.
Many moons ago, many, many, many weeks ago, I emphasized to this rostrum, including Mayor Steinberg and city manager and all of you, that when you were promoting, you said it was going to be called Del Paso Boulevard and Marysville Boulevard where the monies were going to go. And I was the only one in the city that said it should be the other way around. It should be Marysville Boulevard, Del Paso Boulevard. Why? Because I'm a native. I know how things work in this city. And if you look at most, I don't see anything on here that says Marysville Boulevard. And that's the total budget for ARCA. There's nothing there on Del Paso Boulevard. It's all in North Sacramento, just like I thought it would be, because that's why it was called Del Paso Boulevard in Marysville. Now, there has been work done at Rayleigh Boulevard, but that passes Del Paso Heights and Marysville Boulevard. Can't fool a native. That entire street is three different names. It's called Del Paso Boulevard, Marysville Boulevard, and Rayleigh Boulevard, for some of you who don't know the neighborhood. I think that that was done intentionally, and that's why Del Paso Heights is in the condition it's in. That's a lot of money that did not go to Marysville Boulevard. And I think the city manager and his office should be reprimanded for that.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Kaplan, you had a comment on item two on the consent calendar.
I just want to thank my colleagues in the city of Sacramento. This truly helps the Robla School District. Approximately 600 youth will be served through their after-school program. It's the After-School Education ACE's safety program that we accept the money and help Robla fund and do this for our kids. So know that we're doing good, and Robla is very happy to work with Sacramento on making sure this becomes a possibility. Thank you. With that, I'll move the consent calendar.
Thank you. Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained. The consent calendar passes. We now move to the discussion calendar and a relatively unique public hearing that we are about to commence, and that is the appointment of an interim council member for Council District Two. I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Kaplan in a minute as the chair of the PNP Committee. But let me review, before I get to her, what brought us here. As you know, in, I believe, the month of January, Councilmember Laloie, who was serving a term from 2020 through the end of 2024, resigned. Since his resignation was within a year of the next general election, which is scheduled for this November, the city charter says that if there is a vacancy, that the city council has the authority to appoint an interim member for the remainder of that year. To complicate matters, when Councilmember Laloie resigned, the district was in the midst of a city, of a district-wide election, just as we were in the midst of other district council elections and a mayoral election. I said at the time, and won the approval of my colleagues and I believe the community, the common sense idea that if one candidate in the primary election, which just concluded on March the 5th, got 50% plus one of the vote, that we would appoint him or her, obviously, within several days, because the, that person would have then, obviously, been the presumptive council member beginning the start of the new term in December of 2024. If not, we would then hold a process, an interview process, under the auspices of Councilmember Kaplan, the chair of the PNP Committee. The committee would interview members who were interested from District Two and make a set of recommendations to the city council. And that's what brings us here today. And this is a public interview process. It's a little bit unorthodox, and we have the three candidates here. And I want to ask Councilmember Kaplan to talk about the PNP meeting and the process that led to the three finalists. And then we're going to ask each of the finalists to come up and make a five-to-seven-minute opening. We will judge you in part on your brevity.
Five minutes.
Five minutes. Five, okay, five. I was trying to be, you know, liberal here. Okay. Five minutes. And then we will engage in questions and conversation of the individuals and/or, you know, collectively, and then we will debate this and take respective motions and substantive motions, if appropriate, and whatever, whatever leads us to a decision. Democracy in process in real life here. Councilmember Kaplan.
Thank you, Mayor, and I think you did a really good job of expressing this. And I think it's, this is something new for the city of Sacramento. We kind of looked back and said, okay, what process has been done before and how can we replicate it? But we didn't necessarily have one. So I really want to say thanks to the clerk's office, because we went through and said, what is a process adopted by other cities? So we actually created our application questionnaire. That wasn't something that sat in the archives. We created it for this process, for transparency. And as the mayor also said, this, this was delicate, because we were in the midst of elections. So that's why, if you looked online and you saw everybody who applied, why there was, you may question why we're only six interviewed. Because as the mayor said, if somebody in the March election did get 50-plus-one percent, we needed all the candidates running to have applied. Because if they hadn't applied, how can we appoint them? So, but for the interview process, we did have the applications open for 30 days. I know that my office, as well as the mayor's office, being the caretaker for D2, went out to a lot of community meetings. His staff went out to explain the process and the appointments of what we were going to do. And so the application period was open for 30 days. Seeing that the elections, that it did not appear anybody was going to get 50%, we held interviews and invited the six candidates who were not part of the March 5th primary and running for D2. We had those interviews in the community, rightfully so. I felt that the community deserved to go to a home base and listen to the candidates before them. There were six, and the four of us on PNP narrowed it down to three, because I truly believe, while we are four members, we do not speak for the entire council. And the council needed to see the different knowledge and experience that was presented so that we can look at, how can we present the best candidate to be a caretaker for D2? I really want to also, for next time, put a pin in it. If we have to do this ever again, I asked for a transcript of the interview, and we only had a Zoom transcript. So my staff popped on and tried to fill in, but each of the council members, I narrowed it down, to all the questions that were asked at the interview and the responses from the three of you. So every council member's office and staff has received the transcript of the questions asked, so that we can try, and if there's any new questions, opening it up to the colleagues so that they can ask. So we decided to, as you can see before you, present these three candidates. And I was going to say three to five minutes for opening, but we, we had a five-minute opening at PNP. So for consistency purposes, I think it's important that each candidate is able to speak to the entire council of really, you know, what you hope to accomplish as a caretaker in D2 in your time and, and your qualifications that'll help give you a jumpstart for it.
Thank you. I also, first of all, I want to thank you for leading such an organized process along with the city clerk. Really well done, and, you know, it allows us to pioneer this sort of unique process in a way that I think will be good for the public and good for the district. I do want to clear up, I want to clarify one thing that has been in the discussion here. And I know Matt Ruyak, who is our Assistant City Attorney, rendered at least an informal legal opinion, which said that any candidate which may have an existing contract with the city is not disqualified from the position, but if he or she were to be appointed, that they would then have to recuse themselves from any decisions involving those contracts. And I just wanted to say that and put that on the record, because it could come up today, but it's not a disqualifier. All right? Just have to deal with it if one of the candidates with the contract does in fact have, is in fact chosen.
And thank you, Mayor, because that was a question that I asked, because two of the three candidates work for organizations that currently have contracts with the city of Sacramento. And I just asked for clarification of, one, would they be disqualified? Would they have to resign? Or what's the process? Because I think when you look at D2 and historically, some of the concerns that its constituents and we as a city have had, we need to be above board and as transparent as, as processed. Because, you know, you guys didn't run for this seat, but you're stepping into it, and I, and I want to make sure you guys know, whomever gets appointed, what you're stepping into, and the obligations and additional scrutiny that comes, that comes with it, to make sure we do everything right.
We are going to have the official Rochambeau to decide who goes first. No, just kidding. We don't have a select, an order, and I think that's fine. Why don't we just go from right to left here? Is that okay? Sean, Sean Tao, why don't you come on up and, and say hello? Welcome to you. And by the way, I want to say to all three of you, before we start, thank you. Thank you for your willingness to put yourself forward here. And even though this, there's a formality to this, let's try to have a conversation, because that's the best way we will get to know you and the community, get to know you a little bit, and for us to make a decision. So why don't you begin, sir?
All right. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Sean Tao. I was raised in District Two, Strawberry Manners, went to Grant High School, Pacer for Life, and then I went off to college at UC Davis. After college, I came back and I decided to work for the community. That was my passion. And so I volunteered for a campaign. And then I came to City Hall as an unpaid intern. And as an unpaid intern, I eventually became, I got hired as a council representative. And that, and in 2013 to 2020, I worked in city council as a council representative for the council office of District Two. Speaking about this, I bring it up because I have extensive experience with, you know, working with council and working from that side, as well as working with the community. Born and raised in District Two, I believe I'm one of the applicants who have extensive knowledge of the district and actually live there the longest. I also want to, you know, say that I believe that we need to bring the district together. And to bring the district together, you need somebody who's lived there, somebody who's, you know, been able to work with community members from all communities. And I think I have a track record of that. I, after City Hall, you know, I worked for a nonprofit, Young Youth and Parents United. Our core programs are youth development. We do have contracts with the city, and we do do a lot of youth development for North Sacramento, working with youth, preparing youth to definitely learn more about civic engagement, as well as fighting for resources. When I was younger, I was a product of District Two. I believe we received the short, short end of the stick. And then up until I got to City Hall, I believe, okay, resources is out there, and now we have to fight for it. And this is here, me stepping up and saying, I'm going to fight for my district and fight for my area, because it's nine months, and nine months is a very short time. My work, I understand that the city is in a deficit, and whoever is going to be in here for nine months needs to get to work, you know? Look at policies, look at the cities, and definitely see what resources we need to defend for District Two, you know? I think my core priorities is to protect 3-1-1, code enforcement, and all the necessities that our districts need, as well as also addressing homelessness, you know? And those are some of the key priorities that the district needs, because I definitely for the city as well, not just District Two, definitely protecting these core services for the district, as well as definitely having, uniting the community, because I feel that in the past four or two, eight years, the community has been very divisive, and we need to bring all of the community together. I believe that everyone's concerns or comments about the district is relevant, and we need to find that commonality between all groups and work towards building the district or uniting the district, because what, District Two needs the most help within the city of Sacramento. And I'm pretty sure, Mayor and Councilmember, you all acknowledge that as well, too. And so definitely, we need somebody in the next nine months to work to bring the districts together, and I believe I can do that. Yeah.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Sean Tao. You're welcome.
Hello. Thank you. So I, I'm a resident of D2 for 15 years. I landed there just after college, spent a lot of time working with youth in the neighborhood. And things didn't really start shifting for me until I had my own children. And living in different parts of the neighborhood, I remember deciding that I was either going to have to leave, or I was going to have to fight. It was a fight-or-fight moment, and I chose to fight. And in the next few years, my husband and I would embark on a adventure to start a youth center. And that's what we've done, and our youth center is thriving today. No one's here with me, because they're all out working at the youth center. So very, very effective programs, very attentive to the community's needs, and hearing the needs of youth and family while putting it to work. During the time period of growing my own family, though, I also grew my plant family, and I became a plant mom. And one of the things about being a plant mom is that you, you kind of have to go and seek the plants that you think you can take care of. Well, in the beginning, I didn't have much money, and I ended up at Grocery Outlet down the street from my house, and there was a plant that was off to the side, very clearance level plant. Brought it home, and I started to notice something about this plant, that as I took the pot off the bottom, the roots had actually busted their way through and were seeking more resources. It was seeking soil, it was seeking nutrients, probably even water at this point, because it had been pushed to the back. What I know is that a plant needs attention and care. I think that D2 needs an attentive and a caring leader. Today, you're going to be choosing that leader, and I think we have some pretty good options here. But it's the roots that we're really going to be caring about. And the roots in D2, to me, are the families, the organizations, the businesses, and the youth. We need to know them, we need to hear them, and we need to include them in everything that we do. And we need to communicate back to them, the, what is at stake for them? How are we going to help them? What may be coming to the horizon that they need to be aware of? And we need to do that so we can continue to rebuild trust, because there's just a lack of trust in the D2 seat. So that's one of my things that I'm going to be doing, is rebuilding trust and caring for those roots of D2. Also providing resources that will reduce disparity, which is ridiculously high in our neighborhood, and increase self-sufficiency through decisions that are framed by safety, equity, and diversity. I think that we need to do this by facilitating. So in my nine months, I will be a facilitator to our community that will prepare the landscape for the next council member who will be entering into the seat. I want those who are already working really hard and those who desire to work, like myself was about seven, eight years ago, that they will have a space to engage in the work and to do the things that they need to take care of themselves. D2 needs an effective and attentive caretaker. We need to choose the one that will tend to the roots well. And then the stage will be set for the new CM and all of the hard decisions that they'll be making for years to come. So thank you so much for your consideration of me. Like I said, you've got some really great candidates here, and I am just excited to be a part of this process and to get to this point. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Two excellent presentations. Mr. Smith, welcome.
I'm sorry. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. It's a pleasure to see you all again. I'd like to thank, I'd like to start with thanks to you for making this a thoughtful, deliberative process. As we said, we haven't been through this process in a while, so it was important to get it right. And I think I speak on behalf of myself and my colleagues when I say thank you for doing it right. A lot of people have said that there's not, nine months is not a lot of time to get a lot of stuff done. And that's true. It's absolutely true. But I think that if we focus on just three things, that is enough time to work a small I think that the person who, who is appointed into this position should focus first on setting up the next person for success. And they do that by reestablishing relationships in the community that have been burned down, that have been lost, or just have never been developed. I think that the person needs to do that by establishing internal protocols inside their own office, not just for responding to constituent concerns, but also for understanding what those concerns are, by proactively looking into the data behind 3-1-1 calls in order to understand where concerns are evolving so that we can step in before those concerns become problems. I think the second, the second thing this person needs to focus on is just being a good steward of government, making sure that core, basic services are being delivered to the residents of District Two, of making sure that our budgets are balanced and fiscally responsible and socially just. And then finally, I think that person needs to focus on being a good partner to you. We all have our own priorities, that's natural. We all have our own districts, and each of those districts have different needs. I personally believe that priorities for the city should be our budget and its looming budget deficit, in combination with homelessness and housing and economic development. I know that others here are focused on crime and public safety. Certainly, that's important as well. But what I want you to know is that this person should be a person who has the ability to work with you, who understands how these processes work. And I believe that I'm that person. I believe that I'm the right person for this job, because I have basically the time, the temperament, and the technical training to do it. I am retired, so I have as much time as I need to dedicate to this job. It's not my second job, it will be my primary job. I have the temperament for it. I've been involved with this community for many years, although I've only lived in Sacramento 10 years this time. I've lived here several times before, I've been involved with various organizations, Saving Trees, more recently convening stakeholders in District Two to address various concerns. And in fact, I represented the district on the Act of Transportation Commission most recently. And finally, I have the technical training for it. I have a master's degree in public policy, I've got 35-ish years of experience in policy, public administration, public finance. I have run two businesses in the district, and I know what it takes to, to get things done. I've worked on budget deficits before. In fact, one of my first jobs was working for the mayor of Los Angeles in the wake, or actually, I started two weeks before the North Ridge earthquake happened, and, which did a fair job of destroying the city and destroying our budget as well. So suddenly, we had a budget deficit, and suddenly, we had a broken city, and it was instructive, to say the least, in helping me understand what we need to do in order to make this work. Finally, in my last 10-ish seconds, I'd like to thank my colleagues. A lot of people say that District Two doesn't have the leadership that it needs. I think that we've proven them wrong. I think that you've got a great, great bunch of people to choose from, and, well, I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Smith. We do have three members of the public who are signed up to speak. Let's hear from the members of the public, and then we're going to open this up to questions and conversations from the members. I know I have a few. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm up to five members of the public. First is Lambert, then Daniel Savala, McWorthy, Allison White, then Sechow Voit. And feel free to come to the front.
I'm going to put this back up here again. I'm going to pay respect to my parents in District Two. They, they moved here in 1946. It's probably before most of you were even born. And I know District Two. It has over 20 communities. It's probably the most gerrymandered district in California. I grew up in Del Paso Heights, and when I returned, I saw something on the map that said, Del Paso Heights, East Del Paso Heights, and West Del Paso Heights. I never heard that when I was growing up there. It was called Del Paso Heights. And by the way, when I hear that Del Paso Heights or District Two is underserved, it's not underserved. There are certain parts of those communities that are well-served, like Woodlake. Woodlake, to me, is a boondoggle. If you don't know what a boondoggle is, you shouldn't be sitting up there. There's a park there called Woodlake Park that has no restroom, but it has children apparatus there, and they're receiving money for that. Whereas Hagenwood Park, where we grew up, is not receiving any money hardly. If you take what's on this paperwork and give the money to Del Paso Heights, it'll change overnight. There's, there's a There's a lot of great people there. And by the way, a company that came out of here, which is my family's cheesecake business, we just were endorsed by the Better Business Bureau and they said we didn't have any complaints. How many people can say that and don't have any scandals?
Thank you for your comments, Daniel Savala, then McWorthy.
What a rough, let me calm the room down a little bit. What a rough couple of months it's been for you guys, but also for us as residents of District 2. Council, I come for you this afternoon just to say a few words. One, first is thank you. Thank you guys for making this process so fair and open. And I can't tell you guys how proud I am to be a District 2 constituent. I've raised, I'm raising four children in District 2, raised two. My daughter is a freshman at McClatchy. Can you see this? She made a zine. Anybody heard of a zine? Anyways, look at that. The cover, the girl never talks, she's quiet, but the first time she expresses herself, she makes a zine about Del Paso Boulevard in North Sacramento. So I wanted to come today and just tell you guys thank you. I wanted to thank the three members of my community behind me and let them know that we got your back, no matter who you guys are. And I want to ask you guys that after today, they're going to need your help, just like our community is going to need your help. We have been a divided community for as long as I can remember. That needs to stop. Either one of these leaders can step up and can do the job, they're going to need your help and your support. Because my job, my day job as the Director of the Del Paso Boulevard Partnership has been nearly impossible to do for the last four years, three and a half years, absolute no leadership. I want that to change for my district, I want that to change for my community. And I'm not here to support either one of these candidates publicly. I just want to ask you guys for your help in helping them, whoever you select today, so that we get out there together and we work and we make sure that District 2 comes together and they know that work will get done because we are a functioning city. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate you guys.
Thank you for your comments, McWorthy, then Allison White.
You know, the first time the charter being mentioned is today. Why in there? People, you have three people here. Where were you when that money was provided out there in that area? Where were the three members? Is anybody come here and speak to that money being abused out of the three members? All those people is nonprofit. It's nothing wrong with being nonprofit. Where is the profit and loss? Where is you have met a payroll? That's what we need at this podium here. You can't bring nobody in here? How many of you all brought anybody to Del Paso Heights? Nobody. You can't. You better be aware, we had a shooting on Laurel and the Boulevard and over near the Sack State, person was killed. I told you the crime was coming, didn't I? You got to quit lying to people. You cannot survive off grants. You have put Del Paso Heights in a situation, grants and bonds. And Mayor, I told you that when you come in here. You can't survive off grants and bonds. Where is the eight-hour job for people other than Grant School District? I started my business in Grant School District. Where is the businesses at? This young man said he started, gave work programs in the district. I gave two young men work programs at Kennedy High. One of those boys in the cell washes on alcohol and tobacco, retired from the glass company. You are not a leader. None of you all are leader. You are a representative. Tell the people the truth. You got to represent the people. People, wake up. The guy that left here, that was a liar to Jack. Now we see why he left. Mayor, did you ask him for COVID-19 money? He refused to give it. You better be aware because somebody here is going to go to court.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker is Allison White. I think it's Sasha Voit.
Members of the dais, I would like to represent youth in D2. I attend Grant High School and I may not have a voice at the polls, but I do have a voice here in public forum. I would like to suggest that you guys appoint Sean Tao as our D2 representative. Not only has Sean Tao worked to foster help and safe spaces and opportunities for youth at the MONG Center, but also his family and him work Jimmy's, this restaurant down the street from my school. And Jimmy's is a safe space for students. I know a lot of my friends and I, if there's an emergency at school, we know we can go down to Jimmy's as our emergency gathering spot because we'll be safe there. When I think of Sean Tao, I think trust, I think safety. And with our previous council member, Sean Ladoe, having been removed for breaking our trust in general terms, without getting too much detail about it, because we're all aware, I think it's important that we foster these relationships and we need to build our trust with the community and with the local government. And I think that appointing Sean Tao is the way to do it. I would like to relinquish my time.
Thank you for your comments, Sasha Voit.
I know that I've been pretty vocal about this process, so some of you may find it a bit ironic that I'm here. But I've learned a few things and one of them is, my mom was right. You can never make perfect the enemy of good. And so I'm here before you asking, first of all, I want to commend you. This process has been good. It has been good, as close to perfect maybe as we could have asked for in this and given the timeline. And I commend you for the thoughtfulness that went into this and also for choosing three awesome, amazing candidates who have served our community in a number of ways. It might be closer to perfect if we could have a panel with these three, but we can't. And I'm just so impressed with the work they've done looking over the applications. One of them, I only wish he would have run for council, but maybe in four years. And I hope that whoever our incoming council member is will reach out to him and incorporate his ideas and follow some of his suggestions. So I would be rebis if I did not ask you to appoint Sean Tao because I've been after him for the last eight years to run. And he's always been, no, I need to build community first. I need to build community first. And that, I think, is who Sean Tao is and that's what we need right now in D2. We need, there are amazing candidates and they could do amazing things, but they can't accomplish any of those things until we rebuild trust and a sense of stability and security within our district. We need to recalibrate. And what Sean Tao can bring to the office
Thank you for your comments.
Is out.
Thank you. Mayor, I have no more speakers.
All right. Well, let's open it up, I think, to some questions before deliberations because I think, you know, the four members of the PNP Committee had the benefit of, I know, a lengthy session. I do appreciate, again, Councilmember Kaplan, you sending out, we didn't get a transcript, but you did send out a summary of some of the questions and answers. And I know that it might be a little bit duplicative for those of you who did participate. I'm not saying we have to go two and a half hours, but I'd like to ask some questions, certainly, as I get to know. And I know each of you a little bit from our community work. But, you know, eight and a half, I'll start, eight and a half months is a relatively short time and it takes a long time to get something done. But still, whoever we pick is going to sit up here and cast important votes and be able to move the district agenda. So I'd like to ask a question and ask for something that is not a generality. If you can work on one thing in District 2, one project, one initiative, and seek to move it far along over the next eight and a half months, what is that priority for you? And I'm judging, in part, for me, about some specificity here, about what you might get done with all of us and the city staff over eight and a half months.
Mayor, we gave everybody one minute to answer.
One minute? Okay, very good. It's the lightning round, okay? Mr. Smith, why don't you start? We'll go in reverse order this time. Okay.
I would like to have a District 2 specific homelessness plan. District 2 probably has, per capita, more homeless people than any other district in the city, I'm guessing. And we have solutions that have been put forward in the form of safe ground sites, in the form of housing that's being built. But we have no guarantees at this point that our homelessness population will be going into our safe ground sites or into our assistive housing.
And what part of District 2's homeless problem would you focus on geographically first?
Well, I think that the largest concentrations are along the Sacramento Northern Bike Trail. And all the concomitant problems that come along with that, trash buildup, what have you, illegal dumping and whatnot, they all seem to run parallel right along the same corridor. So, right there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would focus on safety. Safety is something that I think needs to be increased in all of D2. Specifically, I've seen business owners complaining that if it's not safe, then why, how are people going to, you know, patronize their businesses? And then we have parents who are seeking safety for their families, whether it be at parks, whether it be walking to the library, or just even building owners and people who have investments, that those investments be taken care of and be safe. We've seen great loss on Del Paso Boulevard recently due to a lack of safety. And I think that there are preventative measures and resources that can be put to increase safety, whether that be the simplest things like lighting. And I know someone recently, really, that was their focus, was getting all the lights on so that we can walk through our neighborhoods in the evenings, especially in those late evenings. And then more businesses can have more opportunity to make funds.
Thank you. Sechow?
For me, in the next nine months, I think, you know, the main focus for District 2 should be, and nine months is relatively short, so I would want to focus on a clean District 2 initiative, similar to like the Clean California Initiative. Definitely work with existing resources within the city and making sure that we address illegal dumping, clean up our bike trails, and definitely create initiatives, work with neighborhoods so that we can just, we can sustain and uphold our bare necessities within the next nine months and definitely prepare us for the future as well. And so I will definitely work with neighborhoods, work with community folks to definitely they understand what kind of programs we have here within the city as well as address illegal dumping along the bike trails, clean up the bike trails as well as our neighborhoods. And so just keeping our neighborhoods clean.
Okay. I'm going to, well, you got Rick? Go ahead. I got, I got a few more, but you, we can go back and forth, it's okay.
I think, I think we all going to get into this.
Let's get into this. One, you ask the next and I'm going to go back. Go ahead.
Okay.
And Eric, too. Go ahead.
There's been a lot of conversation from each of you on the need to rebuild trust. And I would like to know what would be your three-point plan in the period of time that we have to be able to rebuild trust?
Why don't we go Ms. Ship first? We'll try to vary who goes first, second, and third. Here we go. Okay.
Yes, I thought about this. How do you rebuild trust? I think rebuilding trust first includes engaging the networks, which I'm pretty connected with, of neighborhood associations, parent groups, youth even, and any of the business partnerships that are working together already because they're already doing great work, bringing voices to the table and then including those who want to be too. Because there's people who have been, who felt like they have been left out. That is something that D2 has a mumble, rumbling of, is that they don't care, I always get left out. Well, bringing those people and helping to find those people who really want to serve the community, who have great passion, but just need a seat at the table. So it would be bringing those people together, facilitating conversation around initiatives that will be, you know, decisions essentially that are made at council.
So let's see. I think to rebuild trust, we basically need to get back to the basics. One, I think that there is a covenant that exists between voters and the governments that serve them that is buttressed by the integrity, credibility, and accountability with public officials that serve them. First thing is, we have to be transparent in the way that we as public officials govern. Second thing, I think, is, Ms. Ship is correct, we need to figure out a better way of engaging folks in District 2. A lot of, as I said earlier, a lot of the relationships that we need to build haven't existed for a long time or never existed. So we need to bring people to the table. And then finally, I think that government needs to fulfill the promises that it's made to our business community and to other folks in the neighborhood. For example, we need to start cutting checks for the ARPA grants that need to go out. Thanks.
I think a three-point plan to build trust within the community first is to definitely, you know, work with applicants, you know, definitely my colleagues here. First thing I would do is set up a committee with my applicants here because we all, we're here today because three of us, the six of us that got appointed, you know. We all love the district, that's why we're stepping up. I think working with them first, with the community, and expanding that to neighbor associations and marginalized groups within the community would definitely build trust and we can be the voice that brings the districts together. And so that's the first part. The second part is, you know, working with marginalized and making sure that folks in Del Paso Heights, Robla, are at the table as well. My community, the MONG community is at the table as well and business folks on Del Paso Boulevard. So bringing all these folks together at the table as well would be essential, as well as working with the schools, you know. With District 2, we have one high school only. It's so easy to engage the youth. We have to build a connection with that so that the youth are engaged as well. And so that would highlight my plans.
Should we keep going around the horn? We'll come back to you. Henry Jennings? Okay. Councilman Gueda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Of the 240-plus days you have, will go by pretty quickly and as all of us, when we've set up an office, it's the first 30 days that kind of set the tempo for our mighty two or three staff members that we have, for 70,000 people. What do those 30 days look like for you? And then, Mr. Mayor, I don't know who's going first, but...
Okay. I think we'll go back to the original order, which was Sean first. Go ahead.
I've worked with the District 2 staff, the current staff during my time on council as a staffer as well. And so the first 30 days would be getting to know the District 2 staff as well as implementing my vision and meeting with my colleagues or future colleagues or council members and definitely, you know, understanding the lay of the land as well as setting a vision for the District 2 so that we can accomplish within the next 140 days. And so I, definitely not looking at replacing staff, but I believe staff is the reflection of the council member. And so, you know, having staff who understands City Hall, understands protocols, understands the lay of the land here would be beneficial to executing your plan within the next 140 days.
First off, I would try to connect with the team who's already there. Leadership is something that I love to do. I love leading people because I love to see what potential they have and what they can actually accomplish. So connecting with the team in those first 30 days and understanding where their skillset lies, where their passions lie, and really where we can put it to the test. And then starting to facilitate and build a calendar, because the calendar is what drives my life right now, build a calendar to do the facilitation of conversations from within the community, connecting with those who need to be there, and then also engaging with those who have never been invited to the table. 30 days does go by extremely fast, so I will be relying upon the team. But then also identifying new community team members as well who can take some of the burden alongside us to get things done quickly. who can take some of the burden alongside us to get things done quickly.
Well, let's see. I think that in the first 30 days, the learning curve's just going to be steep. Unlike a lot of other folks in policy, you, in your capacities, focus on a multitude of project areas. No one can be an expert in all of them. So it will be about speaking to city staff, identifying the issues that are most relevant to the people in District Two, and putting together lists of people that we need to talk to. And that is where I'm going to start. It's also going to be about talking to city staff and figuring out who I need to know in order to get things done. As we know, we rely on them for everything. So realistically, that's where I'm going to start. Yeah.
Did we get everyone on that round, I'm sorry? We did, okay, very good. Councilmember Vang?
Thanks, Mayor. This is what happens when you don't hit your button fast enough. You get questions asked by colleagues that you had thought of, but I have lots of questions, so I'll ask this one. So first, I actually just want to take this moment to thank Chair Kaplan and all the members of PNP, really for your hard work and City Clerk to get us to this point. Really, I feel good hearing from the public that they felt like this was a very transparent process and it was the best that we can do, even though it wasn't perfect. So I really just want to give kudos to my colleagues and the City Clerk for that. And then I just want to say thank you to Tim, to Raquel and Sean. You know, putting yourself out there and stepping up to be appointed takes a lot of courage and you gotta be bold and fierce. And y'all are doing that, putting yourself forth. So I just want to say thank you that, no matter whom you choose, I hope that that person works with you and all six candidates. So really just want to say thank you for putting yourself out there to serve the community. So my question to the three of you is that, you know, every office, we have our own ways of communicating with our constituents, right, in our district. And I know that there are various platforms that we use for communication with our incredibly diverse community. Just curious to ask all three of you, what mediums do you plan to use to communicate to District Two residents? And is there anything you would do differently than pass in current offices?
Go ahead. I think it's, yeah, Ms. Ship, go ahead.
I've found Instagram to be highly effective for the work that I do. Now, that is with youth, but I do have parents engaging there as well. I also, of course, though, rely heavily on email as that's how I get most of my information about city happenings. And then, as well as websites, you know, when you go, hey, what's going on? If there can be an updated website, that would be fantastic. I think that's one thing, is that wherever we house this information, that it remains updated and living and doesn't reflect last year's, you know, spring event or last year's Christmas event. Really, keeping things updated would be key, no matter which platforms. But I would also be seeking the team's advice because they know the statistics. They can track the data and even going into those platforms and looking, where are people engaging? Looking at engagement and then also increasing maybe some SEO for Google searches on things happening in D2.
I think that is an absolutely awesome question. I think, I don't think that there's a cookie-cutter approach to communication. I think it depends on who you're trying to engage and around what subject. Ms. Ship's correct. If you're trying to engage younger people, social media may be the way to do that and may be very effective for them. If you're trying to engage older populations, not so much. So, maybe. It depends also how much information you need to convey. I think that, yeah, we'll try all, frankly. And I know that you're looking for something more specific, but I don't want to limit myself to just one or two. Thanks.
I think engaging the residents of District Two, I've been doing that for the past 10 years, is being there, showing up. Showing up to events, showing up to neighbor association meetings, picking up your phone call, calling members of the community. A lot of members in District Two, we feel marginalized. We feel that the city has not done enough. And for us to bring them to City Hall, we have to go to them. And so I feel that the best way to engage with the district is to go to them. And so especially when I say, with our youth too, go to them. And so creating pathways with folks in the community, CBOs, teachers, counselors as well, so that we can create pathways and pipelines so that we can spread information to the district.
Let me take the next one. Of course, being a district council member in the city means fighting for your district, District Two, but it also means weighing in and voting on difficult, complex, sometimes controversial, citywide issues. So I'd just love to get your thoughts on the city's recently passed general plan, specifically the housing element, and your views on the upcoming discussion about the mixed-income ordinance that has been talked about and presented in various forms before the city council.
The general plan, I think, as it was presented, what was that, two weeks ago? Or passed two weeks ago? It contains some important amendments, particularly in the way of how we develop housing. The elimination, for example, of single-family restrictions. Well, it's going to resonate with some folks and it won't resonate with others.
How does it resonate with you?
I'm fine with it. I think it's an awesome idea. I don't really understand why, for example, if somebody wants to build an ADU in their backyard, they have to go through an exhaustive process with the city in order to get it done. I think it's a fabulous idea, frankly, and I don't think it really has the impacts that a lot of folks are going to say that it's going to.
How about the mixed-income ideas that are out there that, in various forms, would ask developers, building market rate, to either pay a fee or set aside some portion of their units for affordable housing?
It depends on how it's done and where it's done. Most of the research that we've seen to this point suggests that market-rate housing works in limited circumstances. That the trick is make sure that the developers who put in the market-rate units actually keep them as market-rate units two years, three years, four years down the road. What typically happens is that someone will get evicted for not doing what, I'm sorry, the low-income units.
Low-income, affordable ones.
Yes, affordable units. What typically happens, the person will have a difficult time paying their rent and then that unit gets converted into a market-rate unit. So that needs to be addressed. But I think in concept, it's fundamentally sound. The devil's in the details.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. Ship, go ahead.
I saw the housing announcement, and I saw that there was one piece that some were concerned about that should have been in there to just really have made it modern, I guess, which was the, I think it had to do with parking, that there would be enough parking available. Either way, what I do know is that I think that our city needs to be more accessible and that housing needs to be designed with our transportation in mind. And for myself, I took the light rail here. I live in North Sacramento. I did it not only as a test to, can I get there if I have to work there? Because we are one-car household, but also to kind of put the whole system to the test. So I think that as we're developing these housing strategies, we also need to be bringing alongside the transportation piece to it as well. I was able to do light rail, much simpler. I will also say that I have seen success stories come out of housing complexes that are designed for low income, success stories that would blow your mind. But it was because of an opportunity of a house that was available and made available at the right price point for that person to succeed. So I am really interested in seeing more of these opportunities, even in our own backyards, in ADUs, so that we can have more housing for people to thrive in.
Thank you. Sean? Oh, and the mixed income, I'm sorry. Let's come on up. That was the second half of the mixed-income housing ordinance. How you would approach this discussion, I suppose, and potential debate about mixed-income housing ordinance?
Yeah, when I first moved to Sacramento, I had to enter into a housing program. I had to present my documentation and they had to evaluate because they only had few spaces available for me to afford an apartment there. It was highly successful for me personally and I was able to move on and out of that space. I do think that we, like Mr. Smith was saying, that we do need to ensure that it stays available because I don't know if it's still available in that complex. But then also, we as a city need to come alongside the owners and hold them accountable to keeping those communities nice as they started. So that way, people aren't complaining that they're blights and that these projects are unsafe, right? So just holding each other accountable to what we've said at the beginning when we allocate these kind of housing decisions.
Thank you. Two parts, just to remind you. Sean, it's the general plan, including the housing element, and then the mixed-income housing ordinance.
District Two has the most vacant lots within the city of Sacramento, you know, where unlike other districts, where developers or contractors can come and build tract homes over and over. I think with the 2040 general plan with additional ADU builds and streamlining the process, it really benefits my district, or District Two in case, because we definitely need more affordable housing for the populace. We need to streamline process so that the older parts of District Two, especially vacant lands and stuff, could streamline the process for development and building additional housing units. I think the biggest issue with District Two right now is we don't have the population to support most of the business moving in. And so I think by streaming, with the 2040 general plan, it would do a good plan to definitely bring in these additional units that's much needed within the district. With the mixed-income housing, I think we should, there is a process and we should definitely let the process play out when, you know, when it's looking at certain developments. Certain neighborhoods, they're all for affordable development. Some, they might get a little pushback against, but definitely it is engaging with the residents and the community to definitely understand what the people want and what the vision is for that area. And so I think we need to definitely look at certain lines. But I do believe that, and the folks in my district, you know, we need more affordable housing, more mixed-use housing, more workforce development housing. And so that's the only way that we can see our district thrive.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I just say?
Yeah.
Good job to the three candidates. That's a really tough question that the mayor threw at you. So congratulations. I know the strategies are kind of tough to understand sometimes, so just great answers.
Very good. I agree, I agree. Well, I just wanted to, I asked the question because I wanted to make sure that we talked about the district, but we also talk about the citywide issues because the members, including me, right? We go from district-specific to citywide policy and we have to be facile, so to speak, on all of it. Very good. Vice Mayor Maple?
Thank you, Mayor. And building upon that, so district-specific, city-specific, I'm going to ask something that's more regional. And I know I asked a lot of, I had some of the hardest questions during the interview, so I'll try to, I think this one hopefully is just more focused on your interests. So one of the things that I was not aware of as I came into this job was how much of my time I would actually be spending on regional boards. So, for example, all of us sit on any number of boards, from SAICOG to Regional Transit, Transportation Authority, the Library District, you know, SAC Sewer, on and on and on. There are many of them, and I think myself and Councilmember Vang are probably on the most. And it is really time-consuming, but it's also really interesting because it allows you to coordinate with regional partners, right? So not just the city, not just the county, but others all around. And so I guess my question I have is, what are the things that you're most interested in? And is there any one regional board that you'd be most interested in serving on?
So I also sit on some committees. They're not boards, but they are committees, advisory committees, and I do find them highly fascinating as well. Some of them have been for education and mental health. For me, that is something that I love to learn about, is how do we better serve our community with the resources and the collaborative partners and then even integrating state resources into what's happening at the ground level. So I would be interested in serving on some sort of mental health because I also feel like I have a lot of knowledge to bring as well as, you know, a grassroots knowledge to bring to the table.
Yep.
I think regional boards with the JPAs, right, during power... Definitely my interest would be, and what's relevant to my district right now, I think, well, first thing is we need, we're working on a new library, right? So definitely on the SAC library board, as well as we're looking at workforce development. So with SETA and other, if we're looking at sanitation and cleaning up District Two, then probably sitting on the sanitation board. And so looking at what boards would most benefit my district and being able to fit in within those regional boards, then I would definitely be interested in sitting in them.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Smith?
Acknowledging the constraints of time that are so pressing with this position, I'd say libraries, definitely libraries. The promise of moving the Del Paso Library from one location to four blocks away has been in discussion for seven years now. It needs to move forward. And I think that this is where an individual in this position can have a real impact.
Let's go back to District Two for a moment here as we continue the discussion. The city council voted, I believe unanimously several years ago, to dedicate $5 million of American Rescue Plan dollars to North Sacramento, Del Paso Boulevard, but broader. I want your opinion about, and I know the money has not gone out yet, okay? And I know one of the answers will be, get the money out into the community. But beyond that, I'd like your evaluation and opinion, please, of the process. And where you, if you started over, which I know we can't start over, where would you like to see $5 million of investment go in District Two? What would be your highest project priorities? And maybe the library's the answer, maybe it isn't. But go right ahead.
First off, I'd like to commend the city for, you know, the grant process and everything. But then I still feel that there's more work to do because a lot of the restrictions with that, we focused on Marysville Boulevard and Del Paso Boulevard. And that is the core priority for redevelopment, to bring core businesses to District Two. However, you know, a lot of businesses along Norwood and just a couple hundred feet next to the Boulevard were not able to apply for these funding. And so I think we would love that, you know, if we were to do it over, we would expand the region or expand the area so that more ethnic businesses can apply as well or more businesses that are not directly on the Boulevard can apply because they do experience the similar impacts of the business on the Boulevard. But then being excluded, they weren't able to apply. And so that would be where I, you know, if it were to do over, then it would just expand the regional reach of the area.
And the geography. Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
So I'm a grant writer. That's what I've been able to, how I've been able to make our organization thrive. But the people that were applying for it were not grant writers. And I had conversations with those who were applying. I even did apply, so if that happens to come up, we'll have to deal with that. But it was a complicated process for people who are in a different industry entirely. So you're just, it was, is this as if I was being told, oh, hey, can you change that Cadillac converter? Like, okay, maybe, if I have instructions, but then I have time limits, right? So that would be one of the, maybe make it a different sort of application process. It was really grant-heavy. Another thing was maybe some of the funds could have been allocated to some really specific projects that were already identified. That way, it wasn't a grant process for those projects.
Like, where would you have it?
There's a couple of areas that are extremely dangerous in my perspective. One of them is across the street from my youth center that I am constantly calling people to come out to this corner to stop drug dealing that's happening, to stop prostitution, to stop, all of the bad things that can happen can happen there. And really, to do that is, it takes a lot of, a lot of resources, like time, people, security. And so my staff does our best and we've been able to clear out our front space. Our front space was one of those known areas as well. But that corner across the street, it needs time and attention. And I think that there was probably some solutions, whether it be making the space unwelcoming for people to do that kind of stuff there. You know, there's pockets throughout the neighborhood that if corners were safer, then families could access food. then families could access food and resource much easier, and that's one of those corners in my opinion.
Thank you.
Wow, you know, you know how they ask the tough questions. I think that the grant process was typical of public sector, public sector grant processes, but yes, Ms. Schiff is correct, it was difficult for people in private industry who've never been through a grant, who've never written a grant application before. I think that for the remaining funds, there are a number of, number of different areas in which they, we should consider allocating those funds, one of which possibly is in rehabbing some of the open spaces or unfinished buildings that we have on Del Paso Boulevard. We have a bunch of unfinished buildings. We have properties that are Raza properties today. Three years ago, they were deemed as surplus properties. The city has not gotten rid of them, nor has the city moved anyone into them, so they're sitting vacant. They are not collecting tax revenue, which is a bit problematic, considering that we have $66 million structural deficit. And I think there are some opportunities there to actually create new spaces for businesses that haven't existed in a while. Another possible use is potentially in hardening some of the businesses along Del Paso Boulevard. Unfortunately, it is either the case that we have an arsonist or someone lighting warming fires in the back of businesses, and in the last three years, we've lost two businesses on Del Paso Boulevard to fire. So it is either the case that we need to increase the security around this, or we need to figure out a way to make the buildings more fireproof. And those are potentially two uses I could think of, of the additional funds.
Okay. I have one more and then I'll be done. So obviously, the voters get to choose in November, but for purposes of appointment, should it matter where in the district any or either of you live? In other words, two of you live in Woodlake, right? Is that, should, should that matter, given that, let's just say, most of the needs of the district reside outside of Woodlake? Just, it's on my mind. Just wanted to know your, your opinion. Just a, just a question, not, not a conclusion.
Hello. I think that, so I used to live off of Grand and Realinda, so there is a difference in living in Woodlake versus living off of Grand and Realinda. I'm very aware of that difference. I think that people have needs that have been unheard in the Del Paso Heights area, and you know, it was described as west, east, yeah, there, there is different pockets of Del Paso Heights, even Strawberry Manor. Everything gets lumped in as Del Paso Heights, but then, and then that can really change perspective too, when you do that. So I think we, should it matter? I think that it matters that the person who is elected understands the needs and has a real investment and connection to those who are in Del Paso Heights. And I think that our voters are very aware of that and are very informed, and that they can come to those conclusions on their own if this person really does care and really does know the ins and outs of all sides of the neighborhood.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
I agree. I don't mean to be argumentative, but
Go ahead.
But in any part of District two, the majority of problems will always be someplace else in the district. Yes, some districts appear to have more challenges than others and for different reasons. Woodlake does appear to be privileged, but by the same token, Woodlake is just as much of a food desert or a food swamp as any other part of District two currently. That may become less true depending upon what happens with Viva Markets up in the north part of the district. We'll have to see, but yes, I mean, we, we have the same problems. We don't have sidewalks, neither do our neighbors in the southern part of Robla, in, in Del Paso Heights or parts of Del Paso Heights. We have crime, arguably not as much as, as other parts of the district.
Where are you going to spend your time and focus if you're the appointed council member? That's really what I'm asking. Are you going to fight for those other neighborhoods?
I think we have to spend our time in as many different neighborhoods as possible, and I don't think it's just about neighborhoods, I think it's about communities respectfully. The neighborhoods change over time and they will continue to change. The communities, however, are diverse and we don't really have a good handle on how to get to some of them. We have one of the largest Afghani communities, and I have yet to meet someone who has a good handle in our district on how to get to that community. So I, I think it's less about neighborhoods, frankly, than it is about how it is that we get the different groups of people and how it is that we address their concerns.
I believe being from what communities really doesn't matter, but actually immersing yourself in the community matters. And so I think, you know, the person who is appointed or even elected should immerse themselves in all communities within the district, especially understanding the issues of Del Paso Heights and understanding the tension in history why Del Paso Heights feels so redlined, so marginalized from Woodlake. Also bringing hope, you know, I, I grew up in Del Paso Heights and we grew up being taught to leave the community, you know, but I came back and that's the narrative we want to change. We want to say that Del Paso Heights is a neighborhood that we, you can grow up in, you can raise a family in. We see influx of Hmong refugees 30 years ago, now we see a huge influx of Afghan refugees and a lot of migrants and Latino population in the area as well as African-American community. How can we bridge all our communities together and grow together? That should be the focus, as well as, you know, cleaning up our district, just making sure that we have the bare necessities that every other district has, you know, that the service are of quality service and that when you call 3-1, they're definitely going to come out.
Thank you. I have Mayor Protem Talamontes.
Mayor, your question kind of prompted mine. I represent the North Gate Corridor, and right now we're having a lot of issues with gangs, and my schools are the feeder schools to Grant High School, and so I'm familiar with that. So how, one, are you, I guess it's a two-part question, you can answer it. Are you familiar with our police department and our Office of Violence Prevention programs currently in the district to help prevent crime? And then secondly, how would you work with our police department to be a partner to them, to help our community?
I believe, you know, community policing is key to engage community in District two. We, the community has a huge distrust of law enforcement as well as, you know, and so I think working with folks in the community, CBOs as well as folks on the ground, Brother to Brother, Neighborhood Wellness Foundation, my organization, we partnered up with Neighborhood Wellness Foundation. We did a canvassing of the Northern Sacramento Bike Trail just for the, to get a lay of the land and understand the homeless impact there as well. But working with communities who actually have connections to the, the youth that are joining gangs would really make a big impact because we are, we have to change their narrative. We have to change the narrative and provide a better future for the youth. And so we probably can't do much for the older stuff for reentry and bringing in programs and resources so that we could help recover the community, but as well as bringing more programs for the youth, definitely with youth development and putting them on a positive, giving them a fair chance to fight.
Councilmember Kaplan?
I think I've finished.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't finish all the answers. Sorry. Go, go. Apologize.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very familiar with the Office of Violence Prevention. I've managed two grants, research-based, they were all both had to be research-based, so I'm also aware of the practices. I am also aware of some funding that I think that the city and some of our partners should be going for from the federal government, and I've been trying to shop it around because I think that areas like North Gate, areas like Del Paso Heights, but Oak Park and District eight as well, we all need to be working together to solve these issues because the gangs don't care what district they're in. They just care wherever they feel like they can be most profitable, really. So working together is going to be key and essential to increasing safety, which I said, that's a huge part. So I would love to work together to accomplish this. Safety is a priority, not only though for our leadership, but also I think for our parents, and so engaging parents as well, making resources available with the partners who are a part of the OVP grants and connecting each other as a network, a safety network for reals.
I personally am not familiar, or have not worked directly with the gang prevention programs. It's not been an issue that personally for me has come to the fore, but I am aware of it. I, I do track it. I'm familiar with some of the organizations in the district that deal with it. So as, it would be part of my responsibility as, as representative of District two, yes, of course, I would work, reach out to the Office of Violence, of Violence Prevention, was it? Through the SAC PD and work with other organizations in the district to, one, again, come up to speed on the issue and two, to proactively address it, hopefully, as Ms. Schiff says, as a citywide issue. Thanks.
All right. Now Councilmember Kaplan. Go ahead.
I, I thank everybody for the second set of questions, you know, I think we could have kept going on, but knowing that there's a, there's a balance. And something that I had briefly touched on during the, the interview process with PPNE, I think it's really important as further questions have been asked. And Councilmember Gary, you said it was 240 days, basically? 240 days. I know one of you is retired and two of you are still working. I, I think I really want to understand how you plan to use your time if you are going to continue working. And how can you dedicate, you know, what's your priority? Are you going to continue working as well as being a council member? Is this going to be your full-time?
Oh, that's me. Sorry. Yes, retired, this will be my full-time job. Sorry, I have nothing else.
I have a, and I've been talking with my team, I have a very qualified team. We are well-positioned right now for me to hand off some of my duties. I also have a board who can also assist as well. So I would just really prioritize the, the job in the nine months, but also know that I will have a, a hand in my youth centers' leadership as well, as I'm cultivating and developing new leaders in our community, and I want to have an influence over them in these next few months. We do have some major projects, but they're all being handled currently. I've been handing things off as we speak, and so I feel very confident that I can manage both.
Well, you know, City Council is considered a part-time job. From being here and working for a council member, I know it's not a part-time job. It's more than a full-time job. And you, you have my full commitment that, you know, my role for the next nine months would be focused on the district. I wouldn't step up and applied for this position if I wasn't ready to be, you know, to advocate for the district. And so my commitment is that, you know, District two is first and my priority, and I will, you know, I, I believe in my team at my current organization that they can handle the next nine months without me.
Thank you. Mayor, can I, can I start deliberations?
Why don't you go?
I truly do want to thank each of you applicants. Like, you didn't, you didn't run for D2. This, this opportunity arose, and it takes strength and fortitude to apply and come through this. I hope, and I think this is a request from me, whomever gets appointed, I think you're almost obligated to work with your other two applicants because the breadth of knowledge and expertise that comes with the other two that are here, but also the other three that were there at the initial interview, that each brings their, I guess, their own neighborhood and their own constituency, that while you work with the existing D2 staff, my hope is whomever does get appointed truly does work with those that stepped up because they're saying, pick me, I want to do good for D2, and I, I would hope that you would embrace that. As one of your neighbors, as Councilmember Talamontes and I, and I represent Robla, you know, for me, it's really important that we work hand in hand because a lot of the issues that I have bleed over into D2 as well as D2 bleeding into District one, especially District three. We are, we are north of the river and, and it's a very fluid process of where we're all at. So I am, I am dedicated and I want you guys to know, whomever gets appointed, you've got my time, you've got my ear, you've got my staff to help you be successful because nine, nine months is not a lot. We are trying to, it was really important for me with this process, that we tried to do it right and we tried to do it transparent. D2 has had enough controversy, not just this four years, but prior with whomever the person was that sat in this seat and, be it SACB or other people digging into it, the residents deserve to have nine months of somebody dedicating 100% of their time to them without controversy. Because that, me, as I asked that, that question, because yes, we all know we get paid like it's part-time, but, you know, it's six, sometimes seven days a week, it's all-encompassing. I have a law firm, mostly in name only, that I keep going. Some are more talented, that can, that can balance it, but I will tell you, your nine months, you're going to be hair on fire, hamster on the wheel, flying off and getting back on. It is truly something that you have to dedicate 100% of the time to that. I think as we go forward, my hope and what I'm hearing from, you know, former D2 residents that I now have the honor of representing is they want their voice heard, and they want to hear their voice heard on council, and they want to hear it talked about. But they also want their next appointee to go out to them, to talk to them, not say, hey, come meet me, but go to where they're at. There might be only a couple, but the couple then talks to another and talks to another. It's that good old game we played as kids of telephone. What starts at the beginning may be different at the end, but at least it starts, and then more people start asking questions for that engagement. Each of you has a history of accomplishing things in different ways and different manners, from businesses to youth engagement to being former city staff. I think all of you are equally qualified. Those who are not appointed, I expect to see applications into PPNE so that I get to push forward your applications elsewhere. You're not allowed, now you welcome, welcome to the Sacramento family, you're no longer allowed to sit on the sideline. So I, I want to, I do want to see one of you step up. I have to say, for, for me, having been a 20-year school board member, having run a business, knowing half of the issues that occur in D2, it is important for me that we look at who's, who's going to be setting up this district for success and handing it over to the next council member. It is, I don't think there is anything bad or negative to say about any of you three. You know, I think it's just, where can we step forward and move, move faster, and where can we partner north of the river? And for me, Mayor, having, having spoken to individuals who are, are running and, and going to be sitting in this seat, who are going to be sitting next to me on the dais, I would like to make a motion to appoint Tim Smith to the open and vacant D2 seat.
That is a motion. Wait a second here, let me, let's, let's hear from members. Vice Mayor Maple.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, to build upon some of what Lisa said and, and just, first of all, say thank you. Thank you for stepping up, for into this space. It's not easy. There are a lot of hard questions that were thrown at all of you, not just in the first interviews, but here as well, and I think you all did a wonderful job, you know, showing who you are, what you care about, and what you see as your vision for the district. I think you got a lot of really good advice too, from some of us up here on, on some of the challenges of the job. It is very time-consuming, I can tell you, probably all of us are working 60, 70 hours a week, I know I am, and, and that's good because I, that's what I signed up to do and what I really enjoy in being in the community. One of the things that came to me as I heard some of the questions and the answers is I, I think in terms of some of the challenges I think in terms of some of the challenges, and certainly in terms of demographics, District Two and District Five are probably the most aligned. And I really appreciated Councilmember Talamontes for bringing up crime and gang violence in particular, and I appreciated some of the answers. That is right. We do need to be working together because people are not staying in just their one area of the city. In fact, we know that oftentimes they're retaliating between Oak Park and Valley High and Del Paso Heights, and it's an ongoing cycle. So I really appreciated the collaborative answer to that. The other thing that I really enjoyed also was Councilmember Bing's comment around communication. And I just wanted to say one thing that I didn't necessarily hear, but I think it would be important to think of for whomever gets appointed to this seat, which is making sure that you're meeting people in person, but like door-knocking. So in my office, that's something that's really important to us because we know that we're not capturing most people on our email list, or we're not capturing them on, on social media because they're probably not following us. And to me, it's like we got, you got to meet people where they are, whether it's the grocery store, the community center, their place of worship, or especially at their doors. So for, for whomever is selected, or those who hopefully are all working together, moving forward, I would really recommend that for District Two because I know there's some similar challenges in terms of engagement from the community. And so just, yeah, again, just really wanted to thank you. Thanks for stepping up, and I will listen to the rest of my colleagues as they weigh in.
Pro-Tim Talamontes.
Thank you, Mayor. And also well-said, Vice Mayor. I think that, I mean, we had, I had the opportunity to ask all my questions at the, at D2, at the PPNE meeting, and so I just had one follow-up. But I think that the questions that you got, especially on rebuilding trust, like Councilmember Jennings said, was important. The mayor coming in with some policy questions, like, you're going to be up here making really important decisions that impacts not just D2, but the entire city of Sacramento and generations to come. Whether it's climate change, whether it's public safety or budget deficit, we make a lot of important decisions that we have to come home to and explain to our residents as to like, why we voted yes, why we abstained, why we voted no. And it's a lot of explaining, and it's a lot of patience, and a lot of love, and just really trying to meet people where they're at. Like, Councilmember Bing, and like just the outreach, knocking on doors, understanding that communities are not monolithic, understanding that communities, I mean, English is a, is a language barrier, especially in D2. I know you guys have a high population of Latinos. I represented the area as the Sacramento County Board of Education trustee, and when I knocked on doors out there, I heard from everyone, and there was a lot of times where I just couldn't communicate. So I found resources, and I found people to help me translate, and it's thinking outside the box to really reach our hardest, you know, our underserved communities. So I want to preface that. And I also just want to thank you and to the candidates that are probably at home watching that also participated in this. It takes a lot to step up, and it means a lot to us to have such qualified, amazing candidates. The future of District Two is bright. So thank you, Tim, Raquel, and Sean. I also heard through the grapevine from friends and people in the community that you're all friends. And that you all love District Two. And I love that. And to see you sitting by side by side, knowing that you're going to have each other's back in the future, regardless of who's selected, is really important to me. And this is a full-time job, and it's a lifestyle. This is my only job right now, and I could tell you that I don't sleep much, and I'm just dedicated to my community. Also, it's hard to pay the bills, but dedicated. And it's what I'm doing right now. It's what I got elected to do. We're appointing a caretaker, and in my opinion, Sean Tao is the person for the job. Sean represents everything that we want to see in someone in the city of Sacramento. Someone that's homegrown, that goes through our public school system, that thrives on the programs that were available to him at the time, that went to school, became educated, went to UC Davis, and came home. When people said, "Don't come home," he's came home because he knew that he had to come back and do more for the community. His entire family is there in District Two, throughout the district. Maybe Woodlake, maybe not, maybe Strawberry Manor, maybe the Heights Norwood. His entire family lives and breathes D2. His sister is a high school counselor at Grant High School who brought 50 kids to City Hall a few weeks ago with Councilmember Jennings. And they stood up here, I asked them questions about their school lunches and made them take a vote up here. She's there at Grant High School, the only high school in District Two, helping kids every single day because that's what their parents taught them. And that's a cultural component to me that is important. Like, their parents taught them, education is your way out of poverty, and you got to rise and bring people up with you. And I really admire that. And so I think your parents are in the audience, seeing behind you. Can you please stand? Put your hands. Thank you. So I, thank you. Sorry to put you on the spot. But as like, as an immigrant, who's, my parents told me, "Education, education, education. Come home and bring other people up with you." I resonate with your story, and Raquel, you too, and Tim, and just working hard, like, but that's why I just, I firmly believe that Sean represents, advocates, and empowers D2 residents, not just in his job today, but throughout the years and his whole family and network. So he sees the best of D2, the vibrancy, the culture, the assets, the strengths. He brings his experience as a community advocate, someone who's worked at City Hall from an intern to a constituent rep to now putting his name on the line to become a council member. Working in a city council office is tough. I did it for five years with the senior member of the dais, who's now our senator. And let me tell you, the difference between being a senior chief of staff to being a council member today is overwhelmingly different. It is so much more work, it's so much more complex. You get access to information that I just never had as a chief of staff, and now I have to vote on these items. So that experience of coming to City Hall and hitting the ground running is so important to me because he knows who to call for lights, David Adrosin, he knows who's parked Shannon Brown, probably knows, probably doesn't know that Bill Bucet's retired. But I could, but I could tell you that, like, I worked here. I know who the city employees are because I worked with them, and I, like, before pandemic, you became a family and like ran vaccination clinics together. It's just pandemic hit us hard, you know? And then we got new council members that came in, and those relationships and like getting through that together as a city, I think was just a moment for us. So, you know, he's taken every opportunity to provide, to create positive change, from being NDA neighborhood ambassador to being the executive director of MONG Youth and Parents Unite. He's an organizer, and I just feel like in the next nine months, like, you need someone that can pick up the phone and answer questions about sidewalks or trees or illegal dumping and get a quick 3-1-1 response. He understands the complexities and the challenges, and really just the layers of deploying services and addressing our toughest challenges like our budget. And I just really feel like he embodies the spirit of D2, and I just believe that he's the right choice. So I know there's no motion right now, and I'll also like to make a motion to elect, well, to appoint Sean Tao to the District Two vacancy.
Okay, we have two motions essentially on the floor that have not yet been seconded. I think members want to, want to talk through it and, and speak. I'm tempted to go next, but I'm going to listen to my colleagues. First, Councilman Gettle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, first, again, I also want to, you know, thank all of those who part, participated in this process. First, let me start off by thanking my, my colleagues on the PNP Committee and Chair Kaplan, the Clerk's Office, because I've watched some of these appointments happening in other cities, in other boards, in school boards, and the conflict and the level of tension and the acrimony and the lack of trust in the process. I've seen how terrible it can be, but yet, in this case, you've had people coming in commending the work that's been done to recruit, you know, a great group of candidates before us. This is really a tough job for us, I mean, deciding in this group here. So that, first, let me start there and say, you know, very much thank you to Chair Kaplan for, for taking that leadership role in this. And then, you know, thank you for, you know, the, the applicants, all of the applicants who applied and those that are here today for saying, you know, "I want to put myself," and also, you know, for those, those that have family, are family in, in the public sector, because it does, it does become all-encompassing. It is a, it is a job that you have to love your community to be able to do this job and want to do this job. And clearly, you know, from hearing the applicants here today, that's come across very strongly. And, and also knowing that it's, it's a temporary, you know, job. And so, you know, many of us are, have come into this to see and looking at creating, you know, long-term transformative change that we, you know, begrudgingly accept that it might take more than a few months. So this job of, out coming in and, and setting up, you know, a process to manage the next eight months, the next 240-plus days here, is, is, is one that is coming into immediately jumping on the treadmill when it's going 60 miles an hour, you know, or whatever your, your pace of running is. And that, to me, I think is the, the important factor to look at, you know, is what are the, what are the, the needs that are going to have to come in? You know, an office has been somewhat vacant for a while. I appreciated listening to all of the strengths that, that all of you have come in with here, and, and also the level of confidence from hearing from our P-Bid Director here saying that, you know, "We, we can't go wrong in this decision here." And I appreciated the background, you know? I think, listening to Raquel and talking about, you know, fight or flight, you know? Do I want to leave my community, or do I want to, you know, stay? You know, to me, that's inspiring to say, and I know that the, that building a youth center is how I can invest in the future of our, of our community. And hearing also Sean, you know, having had the opportunity to, to see him work here on the council, also as an immigrant, someone here who came here, you know, I, we consider ourselves economic refugees, you know, leaving our place because we had no ability to maintain or provide or support our family anymore, and being able to come here and create a new life and thinking about the next generation. And, you know, I won't hold it against you who went to UC Davis, but that's okay for those Hornets. But yes, but the fact that, that you came back to a community and dedicated that life to me, that's, that's exciting. And, and to see Tim, you know, I, you know, one of, we spent an amazing amount of time in our last hearing talking about the safety issues and the fatalities that we have, and as a member of our Active Transportation Commission, an appointed commissioner, one who isn't getting paid at all for doing the extra work, but, you know, I guess maybe that's the benefit of retirement, too, you know? Is, but to focus on, on, on an issue that has unfortunately plagued our city and many cities because of decisions and planning practices that maybe at the time were great, but the fact that it has led to fatalities. We have a public health epidemic when Marysville Boulevard has two of five of our networks of the most fatalities. Our Vision Zero identifies two of the most deadly locations in District Two. The other two are in the corner of District Six and District Five on Stockton and Broadway, and then Stockton and 47th Avenue. But to focus on those issues. And so to me, I think these candidates have come to us with some level of earnest and passion, each with their own, their own strengths. And so it's hard to separate these out. And where, where the decision comes from here for me, I think at the moment, and, you know, I'm going to say that, that I'm going to second Councilmember Kaplan's motion here, you know, to keep this conversation moving forward. And where the decision for me to second this motion, to hear this conversation move forward, and as we deliberate, is that it's only eight months, and, and it's a short amount of time to maximize your history. I think Sean also has some strengths here because he's worked in here, but I think the, the benefit of, of what I've heard from, from all of the folks here is they, they believe in the staff that's here. And as we know, in our offices, our staff have the, that current existing relationship. They'll know that, that, you know, Bill Bucet's retired already, day one. So the fact that you'll have the staff that's going to be in there, understanding and being able to move that. But I think we're, I, I see the, the, what do you call it? The, the hairline, or I don't know the race analogy, but, you know, winning by the nose or maybe just on the edge here, is that the breadth of, of experience on the multitude of issues that we have to face, you know, that Tim comes with it from a multiple points of view. That as a business owner, that as a, as a public servant in government and local government. And I think we're coming to those positions in that amount of time allows them to focus on the macro issues and, and leaning on our city staff to look at, at the very, you know, tangential issue, or not that tangential, but tactical issues. And I, I think that's an important thing to set up in office, and that's why I was asking, what is, what does it look like to immediately get those first, first few days to moving forward to set up an office? And I appreciate the fact that everybody said that we want to set up the next person for success because that is the end goal. And so how do you get to success at that point? So those are, I would say that is where the, the conversation about the Rasa property, I connected that very closely because we had a vacant lot on Stockton Boulevard. There was a Rasa property that was just blighted. No one wanted ever anything with it. And it took an act of legislation, working with Senator Pan, to be able to conjoin those, and then working with SEACOG to be able to use that land. And the fact that District Two has the most Rasa properties in the area vacant, that makes the Joint Powers Authority the largest absentee landlord, or it would actually be the state here, you know, but SHRA would be working with them. So to me, I think that is a, an important factor of recognizing a number of the, the pieces that could come together. Identifying the, you know, the specific plan on, on, okay, where would you talk to, where would you start on homelessness? Because all of us probably spend more time in our office. For as much as we hear from our constituents that nothing is occurring, probably all of our staff may spend most of our time responding to concerns and triaging and working with the county department of public health and our Department of Community Response on homelessness. And bringing up the point of the real tactical things that we need to do moving forward for the next eight, next eight months, I think identifying the Northern Bike Trail, we're working right now to try to encourage the purchase of, of new e-bikes as a new mobility option. And the fact that the bike trail becomes a place that's unsafe, then what facility, what infrastructure facility do we truly have for those who don't have another option? So I appreciate that, that aspect coming up. I will stop there and say that I want to, I'm seconding this motion so we can hear this dialogue, and it'll move the process forward. I appreciate all of the applicants here, and then we'll go from there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'm just, I just got to say, I'm very impressed, and I could not agree more with the concept of, of all of you after this day figuring out how, you know, you, you work together. Whoever gets selected should buy breakfast for everyone tomorrow and start the process. I always figured that that's the best way to plan, is start by breakfast. With that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll start with you in that for, since the office has been open, your office has taken over running D2.
Yeah, shout out to my staff out there, please.
Exactly.
Come on, everybody. You're in a great job.
So I want to thank you and the staff for the job that you've done. And, you know, in that, I don't know if everything was done or as much was done as could have been done. Like, I know the opening day of baseball season took place in, in my district and in other districts, and I don't know if it took place in District Two, and I'm hoping it did. But also, as we approach upon Easter Sunday and the Easter egg hunts that the kids want to go to and be involved in, I don't know for a fact that that's happening in D2. And so there is a strong need to have strong leadership in D2 right now, even if it's on an interim basis. There is a need to have strong leadership. My, my hope, based on what I saw today in the three of you, is that we don't end up with one person winning and two people losing. It is my greatest hope that you will bond together, and each one of you will find a role in District Two where you can take your leadership and utilize it to make District Two better. I know it may sound like we're going to pick one person over the other, but that's the council making a decision on who will be the caretaker for the 240 days or the eight months, or whatever period of time that we call it. You can make a different decision, and I hope you will, and I hope you do, that you stay involved in this, that you just don't walk away because you didn't get appointed today. Find a way to stay involved. I was very impressed with all three of you. I think I could pick any one of you and feel very comfortable in the leadership that would happen in D2. The reason that I'm going to second- The reason that I'm going to second Councilmember Talamontes' motion for Sean Tau, 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 I'll get that out, for Sean, is that I think him growing up in D2, him going to school in D2, him going to UC Davis, him coming back home, I think, has shown me his commitment to D2 and shown me that in addition to his commitment in D2, his experience in working in the D2 office also puts him ahead, just a slight ahead of. So, I want, I would support that because I think that means a lot, as far as his ability to get in there quickly and do as much as possible in the time in order to bring the community together. I heard that you guys were friends, and so, if that's the case, I'm hoping that you will stay friends after this process and stay engaged. So, with that, I will second the motion for Member Tama, Talamontes, and I wish all of you the best luck. My office is here to help in any way possible. In case you don't know, I have a work office for my nonprofit that's on Del Paso Boulevard, and we are totally committed to helping in any way possible in this role that you will be taking on as the interim council member. So, congratulations and thank you so much.
All right. Councilmember Vang.
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate it. I should have hit my button quicker because Coach seconded the counter motion. So, I'll just make a few comments. First, you know, I, I have often shared that in this city, there are several districts that often is overlooked, one being District Eight, South Sacramento, Medeville, D5, and then D2, a district that is absolutely often overlooked. And I said this when the former council member resigned as well, that District Two deserves nothing but the very, very best. Those residents deserve to have a bold, courageous champion that's gonna fight every single day for them. And I know that any of you would be a great representative. I think it also warms my heart knowing that all three of you are friends, so no matter what the outcome will be, that all of you are gonna have each other's back because this is really about the success of the residents in District Two. Our elders, our babies, our families, that really need a fierce champion at City Hall fighting for them. I'm also going to support Mayor Protem Talamontes' motion on the table, even though it's, it was already seconded by Coach. And the reason why is because I think it's really important, especially given the interim of months that this appointment has, it's so important to have somebody that can hit the ground running, someone who understands the complexity of city government and is able to navigate that to deliver for the people in District Two within that short timeframe. I also was really listening to Mayor's question regarding the general plan and the mixed housing ordinance, and that was actually gonna be the answer that was gonna help me determine who to actually pick, because I was still, I was really struggling. And I felt that Sean's answer was probably the most detailed compared to all the candidates. Really talking about the need for affordable housing, the populist business, and how we can make that community thrive, and so, was really impressed by that answer in particular. And then, I too did watch the P&amp;P meeting, and Sean had mentioned something about outreach, and I think he was the only one that mentioned the budget survey that was going on, but then the challenges of actually getting District Two residents to complete that survey, right? Because we were in a minute, in the, in the middle of a budget deficit, and I really appreciate Sean talking about, that's something that's going on right now, and so many residents haven't completed the form, they don't know about it. And that really, I think, spoke to me because it shared, I mean, for me, it was like, there's a lot of outreach that needs to be done in District Two, right? And making sure that those residents knows what's happening at City Hall. And so, you know, and I think Sean's story as well, right? I too grew up, while not in North Sacramento, South Sacramento, you know, I too came home to serve the community that, that raised me, that, that I love deeply. I was, you know, told, go get educated, go get a better life, you may not need to come back to Sacramento, but I came back because I wanted to serve the community that raised me. And I think that story really resonated, not just with me, but I think a lot of folks who grew up here in, in Sacramento and came back to serve the community that they love. And so, also, you know, just his story really spoke to me as well. And then, at the end of the day, I think for me, it's just, you know, making sure that someone knows how City Hall's run, right? And I, I believe any of the three candidates can help set that office for the next person who will be elected in November, but I believe that Sean Tau is the best candidate. And so, I will be supporting the counter motion on the table this evening. Thank you.
I want to make sure, for purposes of process, Councilmember Talamontes, Mayor Protem, that you actually put the substitute motion on the table.
Yeah, I didn't do it right.
That's okay. Let's do that.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna, for courtesy's sake, I'm gonna second Council, oh, Eric Gar already seconded Councilmember Kaplan's. Go ahead.
So, I would like to do a substitute motion to appoint Sean Tau to District Two.
Okay.
And Jennings.
Seconded it.
And Mr. Jennings seconded. Okay, so now we have the main motion, Councilmember Kaplan's, which has been seconded for Tim Smith, a substitute motion now for Sean Tau. So, let's continue.
My apologies, I didn't do it right.
Let's continue the discussion. Let's continue the discussion. Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, and thank you all for answering questions again. I'm on P&amp;PE, and so, really appreciated the process, and want to thank the chair and the clerk for all the work you did to make the process as smooth as it has been. And honestly, impressed with all of the people who had applied, and impressed with you three in particular. I didn't get a chance to sit down with Ms. Ship, but I know Mr. Tau and Mr. Smith reached out, and we got a chance to sit down, and I'd be comfortable voting for either of you, honestly. And I think your answers today only made that more clear for me, that we'd be well-served and that you have a good grasp of, if not the understanding, at least the skills to do the thing when it came up and figure out how to move forward in the best way for the district. And so, Mayor Protem made a really compelling argument in, in her motion, and I commented that to her after she did that for Mr. Tau. And as I mentioned, honestly, I would vote for either of you. It really came down to which motion came first. And so, I wouldn't vote against either of you, and so, I will be supporting the motion for, for Mr. Tau. And just really hope in, in earnest that we now move forward together in, in unity as a council to support and really rally around somebody who is stepping forward to represent District Two, who really is going to have more work cut out for you than, I, I know you understand because you were in the council, but like, as Karina mentioned, you don't really understand until you get back here. So, I, I hope that, I just want to implore my colleagues, you know, given the number of us that have spoken up, I'm prepared, and hope that we can all rally around the candidate who now has the substitute motion on the floor so that we can start off this new phase, this new era for District Two as strong and unified as, as possible. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. At risk of sounding redundant, I really was compelled by Mayor Protem Talamontes' comments. I think that I'm also really compelled by Mr. Tau's experience in City Hall. I think that's something that's really important, but also just want to say that no, no bad, no bad candidates here, and, and I hope, know that you all be working together, so, but I will be supporting Mr. Tau today. Thank you.
Okay, I guess I'm, last but not least, or maybe least, maybe.
Last person.
Yes. First of all, I know, Ms., I want to say, Raquel Shep, you know, I know this goes back and forth, like, you did a great job. You did a great job. You did. And, and what you're doing in North Sacramento is really, really impressive. I just want to thank you. So, you know, it's politics, it's a good part of politics, because this was all open and transparent and a good discussion. And I just want you to go away from this feeling really good, because I thought you did a great job. And I was, I'm torn, too. I was torn between all three of you, then, but especially the two. I've known Sean Tau for such a long time, and, and, you know, of the community, really, the heart and the soul of the community. And I was also really impressed with Mr. Smith here because, you know, if I'm just doing it objectively here, sitting up here, right? I thought your answers were in many ways, especially on the citywide issues, a little, little different than the way my colleague, Councilmember Vang heard it. I thought your answers on the citywide policies around housing were, were, were the most substantive, and I very much appreciated that. So, I could go either way. But I think it's clear that, that a consensus is emerging here for Sean Tau. And I think that that is a win for the district, it is a win for the city, and, and that's, that's where the majority of this council is going. And I think, I think in the end, it'll be, it'll, it'll represent consensus. And so, thank you all for bearing this process. And, you know, it's been said a number of times in different ways, all of you, please stay involved. This district is a treasure in this city. It is so important, it is so rich in terms of its history, Pacers for Life, in terms of its, in, in terms of the people who love and care about this district. And for a variety of historic reasons, it has too often been forsaken, and it has had its challenges with representation. And what it needs is not only heart, but it needs, you know, somebody who really gets in there and is, and knows how to turn the wheels, even for eight months. And so, I know that, as Councilmember Kaplan said and others said, my staff, who's already been working the area, I want to thank you all again because you've done an outstanding job. We've been focusing on the North Area Bike Way, been out there every Thursday with, with community members and community leaders to help begin to, to clean that up, and also to provide some help for the poor homeless people who, who are out there. There are so many important projects that are this close. There's this whole ARPA question, which I know we've got, and we'll have, I think, some news on that in the next coming days about where those applications stand and the opportunities that, that still exist. So, let's get in there, Sean, and really work it with the help of your colleagues here, not only up here in the dais, but they're sitting next to you here today.
Mayor, as I've seen the direction, I think it's important that I remove my motion because I believe this vote should be unanimous.
Thank you, Councilmember Kaplan. That was absolutely, you helped lead this process, and you've done a great job. And, you know, maybe you did too good of a job because you brought us, because, because you kind of brought, because you kind of, you kind of brought us an embarrassment of, of riches here. So, thank you. Thank you. There is a substitute motion. Let's call each of the members individually, please, on the substitute.
Thank you, Mayor. That was a motion by Councilmember Talamontes, and a second by Jennings. Just wanted to confirm.
Did I, I left, did I? Yes, yeah, no, no, I, I just was gonna say that I, I think the, the words from Councilmember Valenzuela were, were spot on. I think that maybe this pays for us to wait later on the motions in the seconds and makes it easier because it's, it would be hard to vote against any one of these candidates indefinitely.
You don't have to.
Yes. And that, but to my point, I think, I, I agree with Councilmember Kaplan that this vote should send a, a positive signal to District Two that we are unanimous behind the, the success of, of that leadership and that, and setting up for whoever the voters select in November as well.
Very good. Let's now call the roll. Thank you. Sorry.
Thank you, and that confirms that Councilmember Gata also removed that second, so the initial motion is no longer on the table. We have a motion by Councilmember Talamontes, and a second by Jennings to appoint Sean Tau to the District Two seat. Councilmember Kaplan?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Talamontes?
Aye.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Maple?
Aye.
Councilmember Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Vang?
Almost. Congratulations, Sean Tau. Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. Congratulations. Do we actually do a swearing-in now?
Not tomorrow, next week.
Next, that's next week. Okay, so study up. Come on up, all three of you for pictures, will you please? Can we do that? I think that would really be appropriate. Let's all go down. We'll all go down. Come on, we'll all take pictures together. Let's go do it. Come on down.
We'll let you in. This is how we do it now.
So did you?
Come on in. Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay.
A motion, a beautiful motion.
Okay.
Bye.
Okay.
Mayor in the middle, get it next to him. Put that up.
Got the entertainment, I already, I could use the restroom, so.
The pandemic.
The homeless. They do the entertainment permit thing. The entertainment permit. That's what I want to do.
It was hard.
Okay. All right. Members, 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 if we can. Let's hold on just a second here. There we go. And everyone's walking out. Listen, that appropriately went for a long time because it was important. We do have a couple of items left. Items, items six and seven specifically on the homeless response and the audit, as well as the community survey, both from the city auditor, which I know you're all sitting there waiting patiently, but I think we're getting a little bit tight on time. Would you mind if we put these over for next week, the week after? Sorry.
Do we need a motion to move those?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm actually looking at, I, I think we can, okay, we, we appreciate that. We'll take a motion. I would like to hear item seven here today, the proposed limited entertainment permit. Excuse me, that's item five, the proposed limited entertainment permit. But I think we can get that, that relatively, let's take a motion to continue item six and seven.
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye, oppose, abstain. Okay, let's take up item five, and then we will adjourn and move to the five o'clock meeting at five o'clock, hopefully. Go ahead.
Okay. So, good afternoon. I'm Tina LeVote, Nighttime Economy Manager. Joining me is Dustin Hollingsworth, Convention and Cultural Services Assistant Director. And today, we're requesting the City Council to provide feedback and directions on amending Sacramento City Code Chapter 5.108 related to entertainment establishments to create a new limited entertainment permit. So, just a little bit of background, we created our current entertainment permit program in 2003 to address public health and safety issues related to entertainment that wasn't regulated. We had issues with promoters, with noise and violence. So, we created a permit, and it did its job very well. Unfortunately, there were some unintended consequences. And one of those unintended consequences was that the current code doesn't differentiate between different types of, and sizes of businesses and events. So, for example, a pizza parlor in the Thomas that just wants to have live music occasionally must comply with the same process and regulations as a large nightclub downtown. This places an undue burden on smaller businesses and events that want to provide entertainment that would have minimal public impact. So, last year, the Office of Nighttime Economy contracted with Responsible Hospitality Institute, and we did a sociable city assessment. And this was
Excuse me, that's item five, the proposed limited entertainment permit, but, um, and I think we can get that, that relatively, let's take a motion to continue item six and seven.
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose, abstain, okay. Let's take up item five, and then we will adjourn and move to the five o'clock meeting at five o'clock, hopefully. Go ahead.
Okay, so, good afternoon, I'm Tina LeVeaux, Nighttime Economy Manager. Joining me is Dustin Hollingsworth, Convention and Cultural Services Assistant Director. And today, we're requesting the city council to provide feedback and directions on amending Sacramento City Code Chapter 5.108 related to entertainment establishments to create a new limited entertainment permit. So just a little bit of background, uh, we created our current entertainment permit program in 2003 to address public health and safety issues related to entertainment that wasn't regulated. We had issues with promoters, with noise and violence, so we created a permit and it did its job very well. Unfortunately, there are some unintended consequences. And one of those unintended consequences was that the current code doesn't differentiate between different types of, and sizes of businesses and events. So for example, a pizza parlor in the Thomas that just wants to have live music occasionally must comply with the same process and regulations as a large nightclub downtown. This places an undue burden on smaller businesses and events that want to provide entertainment that would have minimal public impact. So last year, the Office of Nighttime Economy contracted with Responsible Hospitality Institute and we did a sociable city assessment, and this was an analysis of our social economy and it identified our strengths, challenges and opportunities, and provided recommendations for next steps. Additionally, the Office of Arts and Culture commissioned Sound Music Cities to conduct the Sacramento Music Census and Regulatory Review. And this review assessed how the regulatory environment impacts our live music scene. Although these studies served different purposes, both identified similar recommendations to improve regulating nightlife and social activities. And one of the key recommendations was the creation of multiple levels of entertainment permits. So based on the assessment and census findings, staff proposes amending the city code in creating a new limited entertainment permit. This permit would be an alternative for smaller businesses to provide entertainment without extensive costs, application process, and requirements that nightclubs and larger establishments follow for the traditional entertainment permit. The LEP has three primary benefits. First, it helps businesses by reducing barriers to obtain permits to provide entertainment. This would help them increase their guest length of stay, and we know when state, when folks stay longer, they spend a little bit more money, so it would really help businesses to be able to generate additional income. Second, it increases locations and opportunities where live musicians and other entertainers, entertainers can perform, a key need identified in the Sacramento Music Census. This allows more artists, artists to earn an income by actually performing. And finally, it provides more community spaces for visitors and residents to experience and enjoy live entertainment. It will allow them to discover new music and artists and explore different types of entertainments throughout the city. One of the things I like to say, and we talk about it a lot, is that entertainment can really be enjoyed beyond the core. Attachment A provides an outline for the proposed LEP. Criteria for the new permit includes limits on occupancy, performance space and hours, and additionally, entertainment must be a secondary business use. What we're trying to do is to make sure that it doesn't become a nightclub setting. For example, we have some restaurants that do entertainment, but they turn over to a full nightclub at night. So by having these criteria in place, we can still make sure that neighborhoods can enjoy entertainment but wouldn't be impacted by a venue becoming, in fact, a nightclub. The LEP supports Sacramento's commitment to our nightlife and social economy, which supports jobs, generate revenue, and are vital parts of our culture and identity. Both Midtown Association and Downtown Sacramento Partnership have indicated their support for the LEP. Additionally, my office presented information on the proposed LEP at meetings with P-bids outside of the central city, including the River District, the Tower District, and Del Paso Boulevard. They all expressed interest and support in the new permit and how it could benefit their businesses. Again, we are requesting feedback on the proposed limited entertainment permit and directions on whether to proceed with revising the city code to create it. Dustin and I, as well as Megan Van Voorhees, Convention and Cultural Services Director, are available to answer any questions or address any concerns that you have. Thank you.
So, thank you so much, Tina and, and Dustin and Megan, thank you for all your hard work on this. This was, of course, the subject of some mayor's State of the City address last year. And, um, it, it was, yeah, crazy, and it was on K Street, and, you know, we talk about, and I did this morning at the State of the Denton, about all the big things, the big projects, right? They were excited about multimillion dollar investments. And, not but, some of the greatest things we could do in this city is to unlock the potential of, of art, music and creativity in everyday, smaller ways. Because that's the way the Austins and the Nashvilles have done it. It's not just the big facilities, that, we need that. But it's just creating a cool and hip vibe because there's music on a Monday night at, at ten spots or more in the city, and that's what this attempts to unlock. And under our system, the way it's worked, right, mostly geared towards safety and appropriately so, but also the, the process, right? It's difficult, if not impossible, for somebody to make that quick decision that they want to make their, their, their place into a place that can not only serve food, but also have people come in and listen to music or have stand-up comedy or something. So this is big, even if it's small. And I'm really appreciative that you have brought this forward. Okay, we do have, and I have my colleagues and I got some public testimony, but go ahead.
I have three speakers on this item, Alex Torres, James Corbett, and James Allison.
There he is.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, great to see you all again. Alex Torres here today on behalf of the Capital Venues Coalition. We work with music venues, brick and mortar music venues, festival promoters. We also interface with our friends in the bar and nightclub space. Mr. Mayor, I'll quote you earlier today in your State of the City. You talked a little bit about a tendency to focus on what's wrong and not enough focus on the hope that we can bring, what's going on positively and what we can look forward to. And so, uh, here to do a little bit of both today, but I do want to start with a big thank you to staff. I want to thank, uh, the whole team here with the city for all of the work done on all of this. I think it's, uh, it's a great step forward today, and I'm joined by my fellow advocates who can speak to their experiences as operators, but, uh, we've been advocating strongly for, uh, for this first step since your State of the City, Mr. Mayor, and we do appreciate all the parties coming together to figure out how we get this done. We're in strong support of the reform, uh, full stop period. And I would, uh, continue to urge bold thinking because we are at an inflection point in this city. If we capitalize and we move, move forward with permitting reform, sound ordinance changes and more, we can continue to attract artists, fans and visitors from around the world and help our longtime businesses that have serviced our community for decades, like Torch Club, like Harlow's, thrive and grow into the city of music and festivals where the creative economy truly thrives. This is an identity that we all know Sacramento can, can assume. If you're from here, you've lived here long enough, you know that we have a sick scene here. It is a core part of our identity, it is a unique scene, and is one that can be cherished not only from longtime residents, but from visitors from around the world. But we've got to get the policy right, so this is a really critical first step. I thank all of you again for, for the work, and, uh, operators around the city are, are very eager to see this go through. Look forward to, uh, the more, the continued conversations, the work we need to do to get the rest of it done. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, James Corbett and James Allison.
Good afternoon, everyone, I am Jim Cornet, owner, operator of Harlow's, the Starlet Room, Cafe Clonian, and founder of, and executive director of California Capital Venues Coalition. Thank you to the staff involved with this, this is a very important first step. We hear often from our friends at coffee shops, restaurants, breweries and bars, the challenges that they are currently having in their landscape today. This is very badly needed and will help our local businesses and as well as creating pay gigs for our local artists, and we know how important that is right now. Thank you for this, but there's more to be done. Those of us who operate entertainment advantage with a full entertainment permit, the challenges still exist and are very extensive. I personally have experienced extended delays in obtaining and renewing my, my, our entertainment permit. There seems to be a lack of staffing, the system is very cumbersome. Costs for businesses increased as we wait for our entertainment permit to come through, and this doesn't seem to be very, be very friendly for our local businesses. We do appreciate, uh, this progress here and we look very forward to continue to advocate. Thank you.
Thank you.
James Allison is the final speaker on this item.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council and staff. My name is James Allison with the Midtown Association, a property business improvement district representing over 1,200 properties in our central city. Our mission is to make Midtown the center for culture, creativity and vibrancy in Sacramento's urban core. We work to support the small businesses that make our district one of the region's most vital economic engines. Among the most critical sectors within this space is our social economy. The restaurants, cafes, bars, nightlife establishments and other congregational centers make Midtown the center for, uh, choice and a place where people can come to gather and patronize the businesses within our district. As such, they are a key source of critical tax revenue and employment opportunities. In fact, over 55% of sales tax generated in Midtown comes from our restaurants, bars and entertainment venues. The current process that allows businesses to provide entertainment has been improved. However, there is an opportunity to create greater flexibility to allow businesses of all types to have an opportunity to provide entertainment. This proposal offers a valuable opportunity for businesses of a different scale, a path to amplify their offerings to customers, create greater vibrancy, and importantly, support our local arts community. As Sacramento seeks to foster a local arts community and offer more points of entry for artists, this proposal allows the city to make a meaningful difference for both small businesses and local musicians by creating new opportunities for greater partnership, all to the benefit of our residents and visitors. We urge your support for this sensible and thoughtful program and look forward to seeing it used to its fullest potential. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. All right, members, Councilmember Valenzuela.
Thank you, and, um, thank you, Tina and team, for bringing this out for us. You know, long before I lived in Sacramento, when I was just a student at Davis, I had all these friends who were DJs and musicians in local bands who used to invite me to Sacramento for shows. Um, and sometimes it was in a venue like Harlow's, and sometimes it was at an art gallery or at a restaurant. It's actually some of my earliest experiences with Del Paso Boulevard was going to shows that my friends were having in these little nook and cranny spots, and so this to me, was really how I got introduced to Sacramento, as part of what made me fall in love with Sacramento. Um, seeing the diversity of crowds, the diversity of places, and just really getting to know the city that way. And so, I just want to thank you for, I know it's been an expedited and highly pressured task to bring this forward to us in this form, um, because for me, it's just as much about good policy and reducing bureaucracy and following recommendations as it is about protecting something that's always been a part of Sacramento and that I hope is a part of Sacramento for a really long time to, to come. So, um, for me, we have been talking to some business district leaders, some venues, folks who just do music across the city. I still have friends in a lot of local bands, I saw one of them play this weekend at a place that I'm pretty sure didn't have an entertainment permit, and I won't tell you which one, because I don't want them to get in trouble, but they would have fit the qualifications for this. And what they talked to me about, and just in terms of next step, because I don't have any changes to this outline. I think for me, when you look at the report that was included as supplemental material, it points to what do we do next, just as much as what do we do here. Um, one of the ideas was similar to how you do pubs, clubs and bars regularly to do like a new event producer academy, um, something where someone's coming into the market, maybe from the Bay or another city, and can come in at regularly periodic times, whether it's quarterly or every, twice a year, just to learn about, here's what it takes. You know, here's the different tiers of permits you need, here's the different requirements, so that they know. And maybe it's something we could require event promoters to go to if they don't follow the rules. And maybe it's sort of like a probationary thing, like before we tell you to stop doing events here, we're going to tell you to come to this academy and sit down and hear from us about how to do this well. So, I hope, I'm sure, knowing you, that's something that's already on your radar and only in interest of time, and I'm asking you to expand more on that because I'm sure you've already put a lot of thought. But, um, I think in general, um, there's a lot of questions about events generally, and I know that goes beyond your purview, and so we're really interested in seeing like you and Melissa from the Events Permitting Team and PD and FIRE, figure out how do we sit down so that people like P-bids and other event promoters can just come in and say, okay, give me everything? You know, and everybody's just in a room to just ask questions to in like a fishbowl type format so that they can just figure out, because there's just certain barriers that people keep hitting, and I think we could really help them just by helping them understand where those barriers come from, what the city can and can't do, where our requirements come from, so that they can navigate appropriately. And my third point, which might be something to include in this ordinance, maybe not, and so I'm just going to put it out there, is, um, how do we work with our local P-bids and business districts to be like the first stop on some of these events? You know, I think that if you're doing an event on the Boulevard, you should be talking to Daniel Savala. You know, if you're doing an event in Midtown, you should be talking to Midtown Association. And likewise, because they could almost be like that first filter for us, um, and if they kind of have these tools, they could help us look at these events and maybe be good partners and, and tell them, hey, somebody did that once and it didn't quite work out, and maybe you should think about doing it like this, just to help alleviate some of the burden on us and you as city staff, so that maybe we could think about our business districts and business P-bids as partners in sort of this event space, since they obviously have a lot of experience in this, they want to grow that experience. And I think a lot of them would like to be more helpful, um, to the city and how we do this. So, almost like a pre-application step, like if it was a development proposal, we'd be like, hey, did you talk to the P-bid in the area first, just so we can see? But, I'm sure you might have something to add to that, but those are my only points to add, and whether it's a part of this resolution that comes forward, I hope, Mayor, that we can count this as consulting Law &amp; Ledge, so that we can bypass Law &amp; Ledge and keep moving this forward quickly. I've had a lot of questions from businesses in my district about like, hey, where's that thing that the mayor said we were going to do about music, we'd really like to see it soon? So, um, as Chair of Law &amp; Ledge, I would like to give my consent for this to just come straight back to council. And if you have anything you want to add on any of those points, please feel free. But looking forward to working with you to implement this when it's passed, um, so we can make it as successful as possible.
Well, thank you for that consent, because that was one of the things we wanted to request was whether or not we could return, uh, to the council rather than go to Law &amp; Ledge. We're looking at a poly, about a six to eight week process, working with our city attorney's office to get the ordinance language drafted, going through their own review committee and then bringing it forward to council for consideration. We also want to work with a lot of our stakeholders. When we did the assessment, uh, this was one of the recommendations that came out, and we did a meeting with folks that attended the meeting, and they expressed their interest in things they wanted to work on, and so we had several folks who expressed their interest. So we want to make sure that we include those stakeholders, as well as stakeholders with the census that expressed an interest in working in it as well. Um, you do know me well, because a lot of the things you discussed are already on our plate. And when I say that we are working on it, it's myself as well as John Adair, our administrative analyst in the office. And most often when I say we, I'm really meaning John, because he's amazing. And so we're already working on a lot of things, like trying to work on workshops to help people understand the application process. We've already been really connecting well with Melissa and trying to provide some support. So we're working on her, with her on, for example, some FAQs for special events, because that's something that she hasn't had really the capacity to do. So our office is working with her, so we can help her with that. So we are trying to do that outreach, because a lot of it is education, and a lot of people, when they don't comply with the code, it's sometimes more because they're not familiar with the process versus them just trying to circumvent them. So we are working on a lot of different things.
I love the mind-mob, I knew you would already be thinking about this. Okay, so an academy, that maybe it's mandatory, maybe it's not, we think about it for all event promoters in the city, because we need to start figuring out how to level up, um, a big Q and A session with you and Melissa when you can make the time and with FIRE and PD, um, because that's just huge. And then working with the P-bids, and which John knows well, because that is where he came from. So, um, thank you so much, Tina, for everything and Dustin, really appreciate the time.
Very good, thank you, Councilmember Geta.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I also want to extend my thanks and gratitude to all of the city staff and team. You know, they're very much, thank you, Tina, and also thank you for what you do on your nonprofit side, on encouraging young kids to run, and so I appreciate the, all that effort as well. A true community servant. Uh, one, I also, I think, you know, would, uh, as a member of Law &amp; Ledge, support the ability to come back. Uh, we have had a lot of view on this, it is something that, uh, I think is critical, particularly when many of our businesses are, 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 you know, restaurant owners or would not want to, uh, you know, find a different alternative. And to your point, you know, when they're, when my family goes out and there's a live band, my kids are having fun, they stay longer, we probably buy more, you know, cheese balls and fries than we need to, but, you know, but the family enjoys a long, a better time, um, because of those experiences. And, and more so, families are looking for an experience as well. You know, when you go out with your kids, you're, you're, you're not just trying to feed them, you're trying to figure out, how do we enjoy better time? You know, and these are events that, um, go to ten, maybe eleven on the weekend. So this is, these are still more in the family-centered type of, uh, uh, experience. A couple of thoughts, one, um, I want to make sure we're doing the outreach. I know I've talked to many folks in like the Little Saigon area, many Vietnamese, uh, business owners have expressed the interest of, of how do, how do we create like a, a, uh, entertainment district and, and bring in more activity? In the past, they've tried to do things at some of the restaurants, but find it very cumbersome to bring in what we would consider as, uh, you know, uh, in the area, large name brand, name, uh, bands from the Bay Area and others who want to come here and they just bring some excitement. Uh, so, one, I want to make sure that we're culturally also focused. I appreciate the, the point about what can we do outside of just the central city? The P-bids and particularly the commercial corridors, those areas are well-designed for this type of activity. There's been a lot of requests also about creating, you know, in my district, a, a night market, but a night market with events, and then you get into the permitting process, and then all of a sudden, that looks like it's a much bigger, uh, you know, a more complex thing, and so nobody wants to do anything at that point. So I think, I'd like to make sure that we're working as this process moves forward with that Business Improvement District to figure out how we, um, can help them moving forward. Uh, the one, so all, all of that is great, meaning particularly in commercial corridors that we're trying to revitalize, uh, these are, this is great. But there are some scenarios where I'd like to make sure we identify how to address neighborhood issues. For the most part, if you have something on Stockton Boulevard, you're away from residents, you're, you know, you're not, uh, you know, playing loud music, uh, at a time where it's disrupting your weekend. But, uh, and, you know, when my, you know, when my wife lived in Midtown, she lived near the Press Club. So there's an expectation that, hey, I'm moving in by the Press Club, there's going to be, there's going to be a lot of excitement going on all the time. But, you know, in some scenarios, uh, you might have a restaurant that wants to do something, and, um, and that might create some conflict with the neighbor. So I want to figure out how we can make sure that we're also not disrupting a, a balance- So I want to figure out how we can make sure that we're also not disrupting a balance of quality of life with neighbors in a place where traditionally it hasn't had that issue. So there's a, there's a give and take. So I'd like to make sure we talk through that a little bit. I don't want to make it overly cumbersome, but I do think that that is a point of view that, you know, that we, we take that into consideration. And then finally, you know, I mean, I, you know, to pay in college, to pay for college, we, a group of us had a band, too. We played for eight years, probably in unsanctioned restaurants and whatnot. But I think it does create activity, and for some, many folks, that is another way of income that they could do. And so it's exciting to see that we're actually moving forward to encourage more of this. So I think the policy should be to be encouraging more of this. But let's just make sure we have some safeguards, particularly addressing some of the quality of life issues that we may have in communities that aren't used to loud noises. And we do have sound and noise requirements, and of course, if it's acoustic, you know, that falls in a different category. But it's the amplified sound that I want to make sure we tighten up. With that, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate this, and exciting, not only to see this, but one area that I wanted to highlight is, you know, we're going to be building some new housing with the manatees, particularly along the northern part of Stockton Boulevard. And I'm glad to see the Colonial Cafe folks here and the Tower folks here, because we'd love to be able to see that turn into like the, maybe the Colonial Theater District, you know, where the, you know, become that place. So with that, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and excited about moving this back to council so we can move faster on it.
All right, very good. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just wanted to really thank you, Tina, for all your work. And seeing this from, seeing you talk at State of the City last year, and then this to come to fruition now in this form is really exciting. And I think it shows that, you know, we have a really dedicated staff and team that's working hard at this. It's not easy sometimes. Sometimes things seem easy from the outside, but once you're in it and you realize there's all these different people that you have to coordinate with, all the various city codes you have to work with, the neighborhood groups, the business groups, and so on. It does take time, and doing it right matters, because you don't want to have to go back and do it again. So I just really appreciate all the work that you've done on this so far. I think that this very, what might seem like a small thing is actually a very big thing for our city, for our businesses, and for the vitality of our city. You know, I, for me, like I, when I go and travel to other places, either in the U.S. or internationally, one of the first things I do if I'm new to a city is I go figure out where there's a local small band playing. Not necessarily a big venue, I do that, too. But I'm like, oh, where's there a cafe and a shop where I can go grab a glass of wine and see what's happening and learn about the town and maybe meet some of the locals? And I think that that's a really important component for building community, and also for people who are visiting our city to see how wonderful it is, right? And to see Sacramento for the way that we see it. And so I'm very excited about this. I do have a couple of questions. One is around the parameters, the time parameters. So I see that it's 10:00 p.m. on the weeknights, 11:00 p.m. on the weekends. I'm a little interested to see, is there a way that we can be flexible with that, based on whether or not it's around residential, for example? I know that that was brought up. You know, if you're on Boulevard and you're not near housing, is there a possibility that if you're in a certain zone or you're not within a certain fee of residential? Because I know we have sensitive use requirements for other types of uses. Maybe it's possible to be, to stay open a little later doing that?
That's definitely something we can consider. I think the main thing that we're really trying to focus on is just keeping something from having that kind of secondary use field becoming a full club. But we also realize that sometime things going a little later to midnight might be something that folks want to do. There might be something where there's something in there for especially like on a holiday to go later. Most of our condition, most of our, well, all of our permits now have conditions that go with them. And so we would probably apply that same standard to these permits. So the general rule may be 10 to 11. But I think we could also consider looking at a case-by-case basis, depending on where they are. Because that's really how you address some of the concerns that Councilmember Gero raised as well. That's really a great component of our permitting process, is that every permit, I like to say they're like snowflakes, no two are alike. And so they really address the condition of where they are, what the business is doing, kind of all those different factors, so that that set of conditions for that permit works not only for that business, but for that location and then for those neighbors. And that's how you can maintain that balance. And that's definitely something we can consider as we look at where different locations are in terms of how late and what the operating hours are.
I love that idea. And I think making sure that we make that clear, too, on whatever application process there is, because that business owner might see, you know, 11:00 p.m., think, oh, there's something I can do about it, instead of, you know, making sure that's really clear, hey, we have flexibility if you have an event. Especially you brought up holidays, that's not even something I thought about. But of course, you know, if it's a holiday, you're off work, maybe you're off work the night before and you want to go and have fun. You know, I don't think we should be overly restrictive on that personally. Great to hear. And then the other thing, this is also brought up, really glad that Mr. Cornet's here. Colonial Theater is in my district, and I'm very interested in looking at also ways that we can streamline the process as it relates for the other entertainment permits, for the greater ones, because it does seem a little onerous and challenging for some of these folks to be able to get the permits that they need. And I'd love to see some of these spaces that, I mean, that one project could really change the whole dynamic of that neighborhood and on Stockton Boulevard. If we can make this one of those venues that's outside of downtown, Midtown, that's bringing people, you know, and maybe selfishly, I live in the neighborhood, I'd like to walk over and do that, too. But I think it could be really life-changing, especially when you look at the Aggie Square project, you look at all the housing that was brought up. And I think that we should start looking at those things holistically and seeing how we can streamline the process for everyone as we move forward. I recognize that this is a smaller, smaller change, but something for us to think about as a body and for yourself, too. I know you spend a lot of time doing this work.
Well, and as a team, I know that Megan and Dustin and I have been working with other folks in the team. Permits are still issued with codens, we're working very closely with community development and assisting them. And so we do have a longer-range plan to kind of look at how we can streamline and make more efficiently the regular entertainment permit process as well. And this permit process will be less cumbersome, because there won't be the full level of inspections required. So we think we can expedite that pretty quickly. But Jim was right in terms of resources that are available. So really looking, too, at how we can maximize the resources that are there and maybe try to increase resources that are available to assist people with processing permits. Now, I don't know if you have anything you want to add.
Yeah, in addition to that, we are actually working with City IT on an online permitting process. It would help, right now, a lot of things are still paper and email and going through that challenge. So being able to look at it and identify bottlenecks, so we can really understand the entire process, front to end, and really try and improve the whole thing from a holistic perspective.
I think it's a brilliant idea, especially because most people are used to doing things on their smartphones nowadays. So I think it's really, any way that we can streamline it is wonderful. I'm glad that you're looking into that. And then I just have one, I guess it's kind of a specific question, because it's something that's specifically happening in my district, but I don't necessarily want to name them. But, you know, if we have a restaurant that is trying to get an entertainment permit, and they have challenges because of other issues that are unrelated to them actually doing entertainment, maybe they had like some unpermitted work done, you know, years ago that they're just trying to deal with, would this change allow that someone like them be able to be able to access this? Or are they still going to need to finish all of the other issues that they're having with either code or building inspection?
They would still need to get approval from FIRE, because we still need to make sure that we address general public safety issues. So on those case-by-case bases, we would still try to work with them and try to see where we could perhaps assist them. And so a lot of times, it's, it kind of goes and speaks to what Councilmember Valenzuela said, is I think outreach and communication would be really key. One of the things I've seen doing this for the past decade is that a lot of people have a dream, and it's a dream to open a club. And they go and they did a lease and they opened a club, but they don't do the research in terms of the building or being capitalized well. So that additional outreach would really help. But in this instance, they would be trying to identify with that person what they needed to do and see how we can work them through the system. Because we do want people to comply with basic safety standards, but there may be some safety standards that, you know, related to life safety and making sure, what are elements that they can continue to work on, but maybe let them move forward. There may be some that are just like deal breakers or they have to fix it. So it would have to be a case-by-case basis to see what we could work with them on in terms of allowing them to move forward.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Eric, read it.
No, thank you. Questions was answered, and I'll concur with you.
Look at all the compliments, thank you, really. It's, and then there's a balance, it's public safety and spurring creativity, and it's making sure that we're able to do both. I want to make sure, two things. Number one, once this comes back and we approve the ordinance in six to eight weeks, how long will it then take to implement this new expedited permit?
Oh, I really, I think once we have a better idea, once we start working on the ordinance, usually ordinances are in effect 30 days later, but I think that that would be unrealistic to say that we'd be able to just hit the ground running. So I think we probably need to really take a look and see where our resources are in terms of being able to have the ability to do it. For example, in San Francisco, over the past two years, they've issued about 190 permits with 20 pending. And so I think we just want to make sure that we have the resources to work on it. So we would like to try to get this out relatively quickly. So it's going to take some time, but I'll make sure that we can talk with our team.
The other thing, is this particular permit reform deals with existing standing businesses like restaurants, right? And enabling them, for a two-year period, to pay the permit fee, have, you know, the FIRE inspection certified, eliminate some of the other inspections, then be able to have music within the specified hours or comedy within the specified hours any night? That's one category, but there's another category, which I know I spoke about in the state, one of the state of the cities last year, and that is the short-term pop-up permits for vacant buildings. You know, and that, I didn't even address busking or any of that stuff on the outside, right? But vacant buildings and underutilized spaces that maybe aren't currently operating, that's another piece of this. Are we working on that? Are we going to be able to bring that back at any time, at any time in the near future?
Can I jump in?
Yeah.
Allow Megan to drop in.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so a couple of things just to comment here, is that there are multiple layers, right? So you have one, which is just trying to make it easier for everybody to just get through the permit process in a brick and mortar. A couple of you have fused also special events, which are happening largely in public spaces, and the process was related to that, which is very similar to film and dealing with that issue. And then you have these sort of temporary activations that are going to, that happen, right? We've talked a lot about these vacant storefronts and some of the issues that we're facing in terms of that and the need to be able to activate and certainly do that creatively. I will just say, as part of our cross-think conversations between Community Development, Office of Innovation and Economic Development, Convention and Cultural Services, we're having conversations about that. Realistically, we got to figure that out. I think it's more likely that the order looks something like limited entertainment permit, adjustments to the actual entertainment permit, and probably special events policies and procedures before we can even get to vacant activations.
Next, Mayor. Very good. Well, I'm just saying. All right. Anyways, this is a great start. I'm very happy, thank you. And this'll, this'll, this'll kickstart us. Thanks so much. Do you need a motion in a second on this?
Directions.
We provided direction, six to eight weeks. We're waiting, no long ledge, thank you very much. Okay, thank you, guys. I'm going to take leave for a minute to use the restroom.
So I have six speakers for matters not on the agenda. Vice Mayor, would you like to take those first, or council comments, ideas, and questions?
Let's do that.
Thank you. I'm going to call off a few names. Lambert, McWorthy, Marbea Sala, Julius, Guy Stevenson, and then Ryan Misano. And please line up in the middle aisle if you can. Okay, Marbea is saying no thank you. So I have Lambert, McWorthy, Julius, Guy, and then Ryan.
I wasn't going to stay, but I had to make sure that this rostrum knows that in Del Paso Heights, we, we lost a tremendous icon. I think you should adjourn in her memory. It's Alan Wayne Warren's mother. Her wake was today, and my family made sure we paid our respects to her. She was like a mother to me and like a sister to my mother. I'm talking about Alan Wayne Warren, who used to be here. I think you should adjourn in her memory. Again, I'll put it up here. No city manager report tonight. I don't know why that's such a problem, because all you have to do is come down here and pick this up right here and give us a report. It's on the agenda, it should be given to us. That's probably why we're in a deficit, because we don't know what's going on. Now, I noticed that when we were talking about District Two, there's already been $5 million approved. I don't think any district here has had money approved and is still sitting there. What's it sitting there for? Is it to draw interest? That's not what the money's for. Get the money out to District Two, specifically Del Paso Heights. And if you don't know what to do with it, take it from a native. Go down Marysville Boulevard and pave the road, just like you did Del Paso Boulevard, which splits into a fork in the road. There's, there's no need, there's no excuse for not releasing that money. It's actually cruel to do that.
Thank you for your comments, McWorthy.
Well, oh, well. What I heard here today is the same thing I heard the past 10 years. We want to trust you. How can you trust a liar? You can't trust a liar. How can you pull a neighborhood together that you got grants in mind? You can't. Ain't no government never built a city in America. You are up shit creek, people. The Lola could have helped on, I tried to get him to talk to him, which went on. It was about COVID-19 money, he wouldn't release that money to the mayor. And it may come in court. If they contact me, I'm going, go right there and talk about it. You got to come to conclusions. You can't move Del Paso Heights either way. I don't care who go in there. You can't move it up, you can't move it down, because you are pimping it to bring money in here from the state, federal government, grants. You got to keep that, the same thing South Sacramento, Oak Park was the same way, the Stockton Boulevard. You're lying, I was over there with Dr. Caruso. We knew the $100 million was coming, but what did they do? Jason Air moved it out of District 5, across the street. And Dick Carr, he had waited till he got on the boat, voted in. He could have said somebody, but there are some things happening, people here. The shooting over there at 65th, the shooting out of Rio Linda. I told you it was coming, didn't I? Trying to talk to the police department out there? You got to have those senses at the doors, the two doors, not there. You can walk, the lone wolf can walk in there and eliminate those cops overnight and come in here and kill all us. Wake up, bring the FBI agents in here and start investigating some things.
Thank you for your comments, Julius. Julius? The next speaker is Julius, then Guy Stevenson, then Ryan Misano.
I missed the item one about the COVID-19 response, and I just want to just speak on just the COVID-19 response. The American people were fooled in 2020. COVID-19 was the biggest scam in American history. Government became even more tyrannical than they already are. Shutting down mom-and-pop stores, closing down schools, shutting down churches, forced mandates, forced curfews to mitigate the spread. Yet you can shop in grocery stores, you can go in gas stations, you can protest, and the list goes on. Labeling anyone who questioned the COVID narrative anti-science, even though it was Dr. Fauci who said the public should not wear a mask. It was Dr. Fauci who was caught on camera taking off his mask when he thought the cameras were off, only to have it on when the cameras were on, just to note how serious the plandemic was. Mainstream media reported that COVID-19 can be treated like the flu. That was called a conspiracy in 2020. We were right all along, yet Big Tech in 2020 and 2022 censored and still continues to censor anyone who dare speaks on COVID contradictions. One death is too many, but if you look up worldometers.info, you will see something the media never showed you. You will see that 109 million-plus Americans recovered from COVID, and only 1 million-plus died, majority from underlying conditions. My reason for speaking on this subject is because I'm tired of the lies our government is spewing just to make excuses to steal money from taxpayers. I urge Americans who still believe there was a pandemic to do your research and understand that COVID was just a test. Don't believe me, look at Agenda 2030.
Thank you for your comments, Guy Stevenson.
I'm here, it's about safety. You guys had 250 cops here last week. And every one of them are on YouTube as we speak, because I put them there. And the reason why is because you employ all these cops to stand out inside and outside. Me and about four people ran into a little group of Antifa members right Me and about four people ran into a little group of Antifa members right out here on this, in front of your building. Then we went around and they caught us over here. So if you got police here, what are they here for? To stand around and collect a paycheck? Or are they here to protect the city and the people, the community? Because I'm making a big deal about it. I've already talked to the DA's office about it because it's nonsense. If you employ that many cops here at City Hall and they're supposed to be protecting people, that's exactly what they should be doing. I spent over a lo, a long time in the military. I'm not even going to give you the number. I'm just going to tell you, a long time. I've been deployed twice. I've seen the crap. I've seen what they were wearing, which is a trademark of Antifa. I'm six, almost 67 years old, but I'm not going to come to City Hall and have all these cops here. And some of them are great guys. I'm telling you, some of them are great guys. But some of them are worthless, and I don't know why they even wear a badge because they need to protect the city and they need to protect the people at City Hall when they come down here. I'm not a racist. I'm not a white supremacist, and they shouldn't be labeling people that and then have them meet you outside of here. That pissed me off. So anyway, I'm sorry I had to bring this up. Have a good night.
Thank you for your comments. Ryan Misano is our final speaker for this meeting.
Is that going to be able to appear?
Please proceed.
As a boy, I loved reading the Hardy Boys, Sherlock Holmes, and Ten Ten Detective books. I used to wonder why the criminals always attacked these detectives. Well, it's because the truth and justice are a threat to those who are evil and are living a lie. They don't like being exposed. Last Tuesday, as Guy said, we had more of the psychological terrorism that occurs towards all of us who speak the truth in Democrat big cities. Gerta said there's nothing so frightful as ignorance in action, and we're about to see that. And Mayor and City Council, you have encouraged lawless thugs to try to terrorize, I would turn my back to if I was guilty, those of us who tell the truth. It won't work. Your blind policies have encouraged criminals and discouraged law-abiding citizens. Why is it that your policies do not let the police arrest ignorant and vicious hoodlums like these? This is the fault of the mayor and those on the council who lie and call criticism of Jewish wrongdoing Naziism, racism, and antisemitism. Now, let's see what the results of that are.
You're welcome to report, but you're not going to walk past us. Take a step back. Take a step back, please. Thank you.